Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 3, 2023, meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note, this meeting is being broadcast, is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. Seeing none, pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 38, subsection 20, until March 31, 2025, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceeding as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to the meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel TV, which is now extending Channel 8 and 1070, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First action of the item is establish quorum. Select Board Member Castro.
Present.
Select Board Member Davis.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Present.
Select Board Member Shell.
Present.
And Select Board Member Metters is present. Let's give you guys a quick rundown of this evening's agenda. We have approval of a set of minutes for September 19, 2023. We will then go into public announcements and agenda item request. We have two public hearings. We have our tree warden, one for the Eldridge Public Library property, the removal, removal of several trees. We have another tree hearing for George Ryder Road, George Ryder Road. Then we will get into public comments and on our business agenda, which is the following. A, open of the 2023-24 base scallops season. We have a consider of one-day alcohol permit for Oktoberfest and holiday stroll and first night for Mai Gold. We have a considerable acceptance of a gift from Mary Ellen Sobel for Chase Park. We will then go into the opioid settlement committee update. We have our health agent, Juji Giorgio. I'm going to change the agenda slightly. After the opioid settlement, we're going to go into item G, which is local emergency evacuation shelter. We have our fire chief, Justin Tavano, present for any questions, but we're going to have the policy discussion amongst the board. Then we're going to go back to item E, which is the Barstool County Human Rights Advisory Commission announcement of open seats and discussion from of Chatham liaisons, which is something that just recently came to our attention. And we're going to wrap up our evening with appointments to the newly comprised Affordable Housing Trust. So with all that said, I'm going to start with approval of minutes for September 19, 2023. I'll entertain a motion to have approval.
移到
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Questions? Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have an addition on page nine. The fourth, sorry, the third full paragraph, which begins with the phrase "it was suggested," I'd like to insert the following sentence. It's rather long. "It was expressed by one select board member that the town should consider engaging an engineer to come up with a plan for making the current location at 193 Stony Hill Road more serviceable for seniors' needs, comma, and that more enhanced programming for seniors be pursued at the community center without building an addition or major renovation." I'll repeat that one more time. Kathy.
"It was expressed by one select board member that the town should consider engaging an engineer to come up with a plan for making the current location at 193 Stony Hill Road more serviceable for seniors' needs, and that more enhanced programming for seniors be pursued at the community center without building an addition or major renovation."
Okay. Additional questions or comments? Okay, all is in favor. Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metters says aye. All right. Public announcements and agenda item request. Any public announcements? Judy.
Hi, thank you. I'm Judy Giorgio, the health agent. I just wanted to announce our annual flu vaccine clinic. It's going to be Thursday, October 19, from 10:00 to 12:00 PM. It's a drive-through clinic at 221 Caldwell, the DPW building. We will also have COVID vaccine. So you can make an appointment, register online through, if you go to the town's website, there, on the Health Division page, there's a link to the online registration. And if anybody has any difficulties with that, they can always call the Health Department or the Center for Active Living, and we'd be happy to help people get those registrations done. Any questions?
Any questions to the board? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you announce, Dean.
Mr. Chairman, I have an agenda item request. This relates to our budget summit upcoming, I think, on October 17. And I'd like there to be a specific agenda item as part of that summit, that the board and the summit consider engaging an engineering study to come up with a plan for making the current Center for Active Living at 193 Stony Hill Road more serviceable for the needs of Chatham's seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional announcements or questions from the board? Anyone from the public? Anyone online? All right, I just have one small one. Got a little bit of time to really press this, but I was speaking with the current member of the Independent State Parade Committee. I know the parade is months and months away, but we all enjoy our parades. That committee is down to three members, and it is the bare minimum for a quorum. They have a little bit of time to obviously get the work together. There's a wonderful template that past committees have put together to be able to pull off these parades every year. But without an additional, you know, one or two more members, it's going to be a big task for three people to kind of put everything together for the Independent State Parade Committee moving forward. So I'm just putting a reach out for everybody. If there's anyone interested in serving on the Parade Committee, they would greatly appreciate the assistance. It's a lot of fun, it's a lot of hard work, but it's, the end results are appreciated by the community. So there's two open seats right now. If you have any interest, you can contact Sean and Neely, contact me, I'll answer, I'll answer any questions for you. But there's two openings, and at some point, if we don't get those openings filled, I will really be pressing for interest. So I would like to get those filled sooner than later. So please consider serving on that. Next, we have public hearings. We have our tree warden, Dan Tobin, welcome back. If I have our clerk read the first public hearing notice for the Eldridge Public Library property.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Tree Warden will hold a public hearing on October 3, 2023, at 5:30 PM, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 87, during the regularly scheduled Chatham Select Board meeting, to listen to concerns over proposed public shade tree removal. The meeting will be held in the large conference room at the Town Office's Annex 261 George Ryder Road. Two trees are proposed for removal to accommodate the implementation of the Eldridge Public Library Site Master Plan project for site access, safety improvements adjacent to library site as listed below. Along Main Street, one tree, 32-inch horse chestnut. Along Library Lane, one tree, 12-inch, or 12, I think it's 12 feet, Norway maple. A map indicating the locations of the trees proposed for removal will be posted at the Town Office's 549 Main Street, Chatham, Mass. 02633-508-945-5100. The public is welcome to attend the meeting in person or via a link in the meeting's posted agenda, and all interested parties are encouraged to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Dykens. Before we get into Dan's, we had two pieces of correspondence. Put those in the record first. Be the best protocol.
It's typically done after a presentation, which I believe, Mr.
Perfect. All right. So we've got these two letters. I want to make sure we get into the record. Terry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Terry Whalen, Principal Projects and Operations Administrator for the Town of Chatham. Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Yes, please.
If I could, just to, for some notification for our audience members, both here and at home, as the tree warden, hearings are held in town for trees that are looking to be removed, live trees, that is, along town-owned roads only. This does not apply to the many private roads that exist in the town of Chatham, but this is for town-owned roads. Obviously, where we're talking here on Main Street and Library Lane, the particular trees in this first discussion lie within the road layout. That defines what a street tree is. The road layout usually includes, obviously, the pavement, but also there is usually some additional land taken on either side of the road, on the various streets in town, and that varies in width depending on the particular street. And if the trees lie within that layout, then a discussion is held in public to discuss the removal of the tree, why it's being removed, and what actions may be acted or required as part of any permissions given for removal of a tree. In a case where someone objects to the removal of a tree, the Board of Selectment in the Town of Chatham are the ultimate arbitrators on deciding yea or nay on the removal of a tree and agreeing with mitigation plans. So I'll be facilitating the discussion here, but that's just a brief explanation of how Chapter 87 works in the state of mass.
Thank you, Dan.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question of the tree warden? Jan, is it incumbent on the board to make a decision this evening? Is that how this would work? It's your hearing, so.
Yeah, ultimately, it would come to the Board of Selectment, whether that's this evening or at another time.
We could make a decision.
Ultimately, if there are objections, and I know, particularly with the projects that we're talking about here at Main Street, from my days working, you know, active, full-time with the town, that there were obviously concerns about some of those removals. So I think it's very prudent that the board, you know, take an action ultimately on this, on this matter.
We could take that action tonight if we want.
Yes, you could.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thanks again, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Dan, for the regulatory context. So again, for the record, Terry Whalen, Principal Projects and Operations Administrator for the Town of Chatham. For tonight's presentation, I'm going to focus on the requested action for this public hearing. In the staff report that you have in your package, there's information on the project chronology that I can respond to questions about that if needed. Tonight's requested action is to approve the removal of two public shade trees identified in the public hearing notice in accordance with MGL Chapter 87. The trees include one along Main Street, which is a 32-inch caliper horse nut, horse chestnut, and the second is along Library Lane, which is a 12-inch caliper Norway maple. So this graphic, which was posted at the Town Office's, provides the location of the two trees proposed for removal. For some context on the site master plan project in relation to the requested action, this town meeting-approved project has a primary objective of increasing overall site safety for all pedestrians traversing the site. Removing the curb reveal along Main Street to create a trip-free transition from the public sidewalk, creating ADA accessible paths, and defining site navigation are primary design objectives. These two photos highlight accessibility issues with the existing conditions along Main Street. The design objective of creating level access from the sidewalk to the site is critical to meeting the overall project objective. Along Library Lane, the design objectives include an accessible pathway to the Library Lane entrance from the semicircle pathway in the front, and defining the drop-off area in this vicinity with curbing. As a practice for town projects, we try to minimize impacts to existing trees. However, in this case, both trees identified for removal are in locations conflicting with elements of the proposed site master plan improvements. And these are intended to achieve expanded accessibility and safety associated with project implementation. The primary staff concerns identified regarding tree impacts include direct conflict with proposed changes, grading and construction impacts, sidewalk reconstruction, and the resetting and lowering of the Pioneer Memorial. In the vicinity of the 12-inch Norway maple proposed for removal, this graphic zoom indicates the direct impact of defining the drop-off area with curbing and the connection of the accessible path to Library, to the Library Lane entrance. This photo markup indicates where the drop-off curbing and connection to the Library Lane entrance occur. So in the lower, the lower circle. One additional concern with, with the tree is its proximity to the building from the perspective of long-term shell preservation. In the vicinity of the 32-inch horse chestnut, the proposed site plan includes reconstruction of the town sidewalk along Main Street, fire hydrant relocation, grading and construction impacts. So this photo markup illustrates the primary impact areas of concern for tree survivability associated with project construction. So again, the project, looking back to the previous graphic, you noted there was some grading lines here, and then also with reconstruction of the sidewalk here. You can see that the property line, in this instance, actually, the hydrant is actually on the town property, but the, as Dan mentioned in his overview about jurisdiction, that the property line kind of clips the root structure here. So following up on concern raised at meetings with the Historic Business District Commission or the HBDC and the Planning Board, the project team looked at the following primary alternatives, including no action, removing the proposed wall in the vicinity of the horse chestnut, and the proposed site plan. The no-action alternative is not practicable as it does not meet the objective of this town meeting-approved project. Removing the wall and maintaining the tree does not eliminate the need for grading and sidewalk construction, which includes the cutting of roots to meet the project objective. This alternative raises issues with tree survivability, injury liability, and future removal costs. These concerns make this alternative not practicable from a staff perspective. The proposed site plan alternative provides a way to meet the objective of this town meeting-approved project. It removes liability associated with construction, with, with construction compromised trees, and provides mitigation for the two lost trees, and is practicable in this context. As noted, this project includes planting two trees within the grassed area between the reconstructed semicircle walk and the Main Street sidewalk to mitigate the two trees proposed for removal in this requested action. This graphic indicates the general areas identified for tree planting. If this request is approved, follow-up consultation with the Friends of Trees and the project's landscape architect will resume finalizing the site, excuse me, finalizing the size and species type of the replacement trees to be included in the planting plan. With that, I conclude my presentation, and would like to point out that representatives of the Eldridge Public Library and Board of Trustees are present and can address more specific questions on needs and the pedestrian safety history of the site.
All right. Thank you, Terry.
You're welcome.
Okay, now we've got two correspondence. Did everyone get a copy of these?
Yes.
Yes, okay. If we could just read, the clerk to read in, I guess we'll read both of them in. The first one is a very short one, which applies strictly to the Eldridge Public Library.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think Ms. Holt wanted to read her own.
DeeDee, do you want to read your own letter today? That is perfectly fine. So we're going to hold off your letter in a second. If you could just read this one other piece of correspondence from the record, and then we'll get into the public comments.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is from Michael and Ann Westgate. Large trees are rare in Chatham. The large chestnut tree in front of the Eldridge Public Library is a very visible, green, and shady presence in the center of our town. The landscaping plan for the library should be designed around retention of the tree and its root system. We would hate to see it's lost, see it lost.
Thank you very much. Now I'm going to go to public comment, and DeeDee, I might as well start out with you. Please.
Thank you. Representing Friends of Trees, just a general comment before I get into the specifics of the library trees. Friends of Trees' mission is to plant, care for, protect, and advocate for Chatham's trees. Trees have significant environmental value, improve property values, and provide a sense of place. Sometimes, however, there is no practical option to sacrificing a tree for a greater benefit. However, when a tree must be taken, it must be replaced if we want Chatham's tree canopy to be maintained or grow. The Commonwealth recognized the importance of the trees by passing the shade tree law, which Dan just referred to. This law intends to protect trees in the street, in the streetscape by requiring a public hearing, which is why we're here now. The proposed tree removal has generated quite a bit of interest and concern in town. I think that's understandable. Most of Chatham know this horse chestnut. The girth of the tree is about 108 inches or nine inches, nine feet in circumference. Based upon several methods of calculating the age of the horse chestnut of this size, it is over 100 years old, or as much as 150 years old. The library was dedicated in 1896, so it may have been planted around the same time. The tree has anchored this corner for longer than most of us have been alive. It's a shame, if it may go. Unfortunately, it could share, it will share the fate of many large trees because they're just in the way. Friends of Trees has been in conversation with the landscape architect and Bob Rooney, the acting DPW earlier this year, DPW director earlier this year, about the library landscape plan, the sidewalk alterations, and the fate of the horse chestnut. Friends of Trees strongly advocated for an alternative that would spare the tree, but with conversations with town officials, they offered none. The options for the tree, then, are few. Take it down now, or let it die a slow death as a result of the severe root damage and then becoming a danger to passersby. That said, the tree removal is not taken lightly. We've had some agreement with the town that it, that if it must go, it will be replaced with multiple trees pending the final library landscape plan, which I think is still in flux. Is it, yeah. We also discussed ideas to preserve some of the wood from this great tree, again, if it, if it must go and no better alternative is found. Some alternatives, other than it's going to the landfill or being burned, burned up, and thus releasing a massive amount of carbon, carbon dioxide that this tree is sequestering. We also discussed this wood maybe becoming a bench, or other ideas should be considered for how to use this tree. Again, that's if it must go. Friends of Trees is still advocating that we find a way, as was just mentioned in the Westgate's letter, to do something else that will allow us to preserve this possibly 150-year-old tree that has been a significant focal point in Chatham for many years. Hope you will consider our comments.
Thank you, DeeDee. Any additional public comments? Yeah, hand in the back, and then...
Thank you. My name is Janet Whitmore. I live at 727 Main Street in Chatham. This tree has been present my entire life. I'll be looking to celebrate my 73rd birthday soon, and I'm very saddened to hear that the town is considering removal of this tree. I have gone by the area multiple times and looked at the ground and noted the sidewalk on the north side entering the library doesn't show any signs where the roots have lifted the walk in any way, nor has it obstructed the sidewalk in any way. That, that is still very level. That is still very level. There is, however, I can see where there is need for improvement on the east-facing side of the circle where there is quite a bit of disruption. I don't know whether it's from frost eaves or whatever. I can see why the Norway maple needs to be taken out. It is too close to the building, and it has not been cared well by whomever has trimmed it. And I want to, I have a couple of questions to ask the warden. Warden, how did you determine that it was a horse chestnut?
Well, that is the species that it is, and we did engage an outside certified arborist to examine the situation and provide us with information on the condition of that particular tree.
And what is the name of the arborist, sir?
I don't, do you have that with you, Terry? I don't have that.
Yeah, it was Michael Talbot, and confirmed the species.
Okay, Michael Talbot. And how did he confirm that?
I guess in his capacity as a certified arborist, and I believe that's also been the determination by the Friends of Trees and their documentation that they have for the trees around town.
All right. Because the American chestnut is a tree species that is at risk, and obviously, this tree is within that family and still producing nuts. I picked up one today. It was beautiful. And I just would be greatly saddened to see this tree come down. I feel that the town needs to reconsider its plans, and also, there was mention of possibly moving the historic monument. Is that part of the plan?
Terry?
Yes, so when the, as part of the whole overall Site Master Plan project, it's actually, and I called it resettling, excuse me, resetting and lowering. So part of the message, and part of that was actually funded through Community Preservation Act funding, and with the interest emphasis, again, on access, public access. So as part of the project, if you're standing in front of, looking at the monument, part of this project includes having level street access to the monument in a newly-created patio area as part of that project, and again, some of the concerns with, again, the construction impact of working in, around, and under the tree canopy of the proposed, of the tree proposed for removal.
So just for the note, I'm very, very much against the taking down of this tree, and I believe that the town should find a way to honor this ancient tree. It's an old-growth tree, an old-growth tree, as the Friends of Trees have mentioned, is one that possibly could have been here well over 100 years, and Chatham has very few of those trees. And just because they think that it might go from a slow death because of maybe some roots being disrupted, I would hope that there would be all kinds of care taken to preserve this beautiful tree. Thank you.
Thank you. There was a hand in the back, yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Doug Camerly, International Society of Arbiculture Certified Arborist, 169 Vineyard Avenue in Chatham. I think the information presented is quite clear. My professional opinion is unfortunately, the overarching concern is liability. And Dan Tobin pointed out correctly, as did DeeDee, that this tree will only become more of a risk to the town and from, oh, I'm sorry, the tree will only become more of a risk over time. Unfortunately, with tree failure assessment, there's no way of knowing when a tree will fail or how. It's just a question of will the target be hit in that particular location? You have pedestrians, you have vehicles, you have all sorts of potential problems. And in arborage circles, it's almost unconscionable, certainly illegal, to ignore unknown risk, and I would not want to see the town in that position. Unfortunately, this is as bad as a situation like this gets. It's a beautiful tree. If there was a way to preserve it, it would be worth the effort, but this location is extremely problematic. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions from the audience? Yes.
Hi, I'm Amy Andreasen, the Director at the Eldridge Public Library. I want to thank you for having this hearing today. So the town calls this the Site Master Plan. At the library, we've always called it the Safety and Accessibility Plan, and we, our sole purpose is trying to improve access and safety on the property. This project has already been delayed four and a half years since it was first brought to this board and other committees, and it was delayed for the voice of a few while we're trying to improve access to many. We receive a lot of complaints from patrons regarding the difficulty of getting from Main Street into the building. We have a limited parking in the back, as everyone knows, and people in wheelchairs, strollers, canes. It is not easy to push up through the grass or push up Main Street to get into the library. We want to make sure that we are accessible and accommodating to individuals and that everyone has equal access to our programs and services. We, so we have two trees scheduled to come down for the sole purpose of safety and accessibility to the property. We're actually keeping 23 trees on the property, so we don't take, taking these two trees, we don't take it lightly. A lot of thought has gone into this project, and there are two additional trees, as Terry pointed out, that will be planted in place of, on the front property there to provide the shade, and in another 100 years, they will grow into these beautiful shade trees that we have had in the past. So I guess that's it. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public here? Anyone online? We have a couple of hands up.
We have Ann Ryan online.
Ann, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair. While I appreciate the safety and accessibility issues and that they are important, I think it would be really unfortunate if you were to go ahead and remove especially the horse chestnut tree, perhaps the other one, but the, this old, beautiful tree that has brought so much to this town, I think it would be really sad, and I hope that the town can find another way to work around this so that it is not needlessly removed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. Any additional?
Yes, we have Gloria Freeman.
Gloria, please go ahead.
Thank you, and hi, Dan. It's good to have you back. It is Gloria Freeman. It seems to me that before any action is taken to approve the removal of these trees, that we should be absolutely sure there is no way to save them. I realize that could mean expense, but there must be a way other than remove the two trees, but especially the horse chestnut. I think Friends of Trees has some hope that they can be saved, and where there is a will, there's one. I think the suggested mitigation, one tree only per one tree, is poorly lacking, but more importantly, these trees should be saved if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. All right. Any additional individuals? Anyone else from the library board who wants to speak, make a comment?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. Ellen Briggs does have.
Ellen, one second, yep. Ellen, one moment, sir? Yeah.
My name's Kerry Brown. I'm the President of the Board of Trustees at the library, and it's, I'm also a member of the Friends of Trees Board, and I feel this rather deeply. Part of the issue, this began as both an aesthetic and a safety issue. I've become a believer that it is primarily, this is, I'm going back to 2017, so this is, Amy had said, four years, but the inception of this began in 2017. This project has been going on for six years. If we table it now and talk about going back to more investigation, I think there is going to be a huge amount of frustration. There will be. It is a shame, DeeDee mentioned it in her, in the library or in the Chatham Chronicle or the Cape Cod Chronicle issue just recently. It's a shame. Nobody takes this lightly. The bottom line of this is safety. Joe Gagliano, who was the president two times before I was, said this is about safety, and I appreciate the comment earlier about liability. It's one about liability. We have an aging tree. It pains me deeply because I am a lover of trees, but I think the time has come, and I hate to say that. So anyway, I won't talk any further.
Thank you. Ms. Briggs, are you online?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Ellen Briggs, Protect Our Past, and thank you for this opportunity to speak up. As you know, Protect Our Past focuses on saving historic homes, and that includes the streetscapes of Chatham. And this tree happens to fall into that category, that we don't focus on trees that protect our past. I think it is totally appropriate that we address it because the streetscapes of Chatham are extremely important, and that tree has offered for, what, almost 150 years, the streetscape in front of the library, which is near and dear to so many hearts. I totally get trying to improve the access, especially for those who have special needs, and therefore, the tree on Library Lane, I think, does not have a particular purpose. I don't feel like it needs to be there. It's not part of the streetscape. And the area up and by that area, that entrance at Library Lane is, and can be made more available to those with special needs. So I totally approve of that. But I, you know, histories, trees have a way of surviving in the most unusual ways, and I think if you did some Googling on that, you would be surprised at how these trees find a way to continue to exist after 150 years or 100 years, however long it's lived. And I would like this one to have a chance to do that. It means a lot to the streetscape. It is part of the Chatham's history. If you go through the photographs from years in the past, that tree has been there for a long, long time, and why not give it a chance? I know that people can be very clever in engineering alternatives, and I would like to see that perhaps applied in this situation, so I thank you for considering that.
Thank you, Ms. Briggs. No additional online? Anyone else from the public here? All right. Questions or comments from the board? Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have some questions. I think Terry's probably going to be the one to answer them. I will state for the record, I'm the Select Board's Liaison to the Board of Trustees of the Eldridge Public Library, and I'm fairly familiar with this particular issue, and I was present at a meeting of the library board and the library leadership with Mr. Rooney when he was the acting Public Works Director. So I have the benefit of that background in regards to this issue, but Terry, the arborist that the town engaged, what did he conclude in terms of preservation of the tree, and particularly with respect to the condition of the tree as he observed it, if he had any comments on that? I wonder if you could tell us?
Well, he did come to an overall, you know, saying that the tree could survive, you know, but the impacts of the construction or, you know, with staff as we're looking at, in particular, you know, in respect, if, maybe I'll go back to the picture, might show it more clearly, but in particular with the, and talk about the horse chestnut here.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
With, with the impacts involved with reconstructing the sidewalk. So as part of the project, there's reconstruction of the sidewalk that would involve cutting, again, while there's, maybe you're not seeing the root structure protruding above the surface, and again, I'm not sure if that's characteristic of horse chestnuts. Dan could maybe comment on that because I actually don't see them on the other side. But, but, you know, to do the sidewalk, they would need to be cutting into the roots to prepare the base for the sidewalk, so that would happen in this vicinity. So that was one of the bigger concerns with the construction impact, and then the moving of earth and heavy equipment over the area that I'm showing right here, and compaction involved with the reconstruction of the semicircle of that pathway. So the emphasis of the project, while we're talking about safety, we're also trying to be cognizant of, you know, the historical nature in maintaining that semicircle, and with both of them having the, let's call it the zero entry or the, you know, no transition to the sidewalk.
Did he have any comment or observation about the condition of the tree apart from the construction that the town was contemplating doing in terms of its survivability?
Well, I mean, they, you know, all trees do have a lifetime. I would need to go back and check that, Dan. I don't recollect him talking about the longevity, but I know Bob Rooney, who also had an arborist and forestry background, you know, multiple years later, did look at it and notice degradation in the upward joints and some of the, some of the branches as well, when I believe he reported that at that meeting we had back in, I want to say.
I'm remembering the comment by Mr. Rooney.
January, February of 2023.
Yeah, I remember the comments by Mr. Rooney. That's why I was asking the question. Did you have something you wanted to add, Dan?
No, there was some investigation that was done as part of the survey of the tree that the arborist conducted. He did not notice any significant rot or things, but for the testing that he did, a Level 2 test, he determined that things appeared to be fairly sound with the tree, so.
We had, when we had the tornado a few years ago, there was a tree on the opposite side. I don't recall what type, was that a chestnut tree?
That was a maple tree there.
Maple tree. That fell.
Yes.
And there was a tree across the street on the property of the Methodist Church either fell completely or a significant limb came down. Is that?
There was, I believe it was a horse chestnut as well across the street. Actually, I think it even hit this one a little bit as part of that. So on the, above the wall, if you're looking across the street, unfortunately, I don't have a picture of that, but that's where that tree was, and I think it was actually even a larger caliper. Dan, I don't know if you remember, but that was, you are here.
That was a storm damage loss also, yeah, and that's.
That was still there.
Yeah, right.
So the library and the town are presenting this as a safety and access issue as much as for the library, a landscaping issue. Is there any, if, apart from the library's safety site plan, if that weren't being undertaken, and you were just focusing on the town sidewalk, is there a safety or access issue on the sidewalk? I'm not talking about access to the library, but access in walking down the sidewalk, because at the edge, that picture doesn't show it, but one of your other photographs showed how high that sidewalk is when it hits the pavement at Library Lane. Can you show that?
Sure.
There it is, okay?
Yeah.
So I guess I want to know, is there a safety issue that is related solely to the sidewalk from the town's perspective?
Well, from the perspective of, I believe, Amy's commentary about, you know, the tripping reports they get from, let's call it a mobility safety issue, but if you're talking about the safety of the tree, originally, this project did not include the sidewalk in front, so the rebuilding of the sidewalk. So the rebuilding of the sidewalk, so from the safety perspective of the, and I had a better picture looking, but I don't have it in here, sorry. As you look, you know, again, you can see it's not a very flat, flat sidewalk. So, you know, it needs repairs. And again, that's why in speaking with the, back when Dan was here, we had a couple of meetings out in the field with the previous DPW director, and then subsequent direct, with interim director Rooney as well, with the need to basically prepare that base and cutting into the, you can sort of see it here, but again, needing to cut into the root system to, to, to have a truly safe level sidewalk.
Yeah, I guess that's the question I want to ask. If, if we didn't have the library project, and the town simply looked at that sidewalk and said, presumably, we've got to fix that.
Correct.
Would the tree be impacted?
Right. And that, that was, it will be, it was programmed to be part of the sewer, continuing sewer work on Main Street. So that, that would have happened, and quite frankly, I don't know how far into the street. Again, those roots may or may not go, but, you know, the sidewalk work was programmed for different timing reasons. We're bundling it together now for economy efficiency and just even coordination of the two projects.
Okay. I want to just say that I, I very much appreciate the comments of the Friends of Trees. I do like their suggestion at the close of the letter where they say that if the tree does come down, that maybe some good can come of the wood in it. It could be used for benches. And the library is always potentially available as a location for benches. Yes, it's a very graceful tree. It's part of the history of the town, but I think, I've always, on this board cited on the side of, fallen on the side of public safety. So I think this is a difficult choice, but I'm very much going to support the removal of this tree. And I hope we can take a vote tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Additional questions or comments from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm terribly, terrifically, I should say, conflicted as well. No one wants to cut a tree down, never mind a tree that's somewhere between 100 and 150 years old, that's, you know, an old growth tree in this town, and we have so few of them. But I do also lean toward the opinion of the experts and toward safety and increased accessibility. So I do think that, I really liked what the Friends of Trees wrote, DeeDee's comments. I think a bench ought to be made out of the wood and call it the Chestnut Bench, and it commemorates the, this beautiful tree, and have it live forever as a bench. But I'm afraid if we're, if we're going to do this project and do it right, then the tree has to come down. And I hate to say that. I, you know, I'm a member of the Friends of Trees, and I love trees, but, and I hate to see them come down, but I think unfortunately, the public interest outweighs the life of this tree. Sorry to say. Thank you.
Mike?
My memory's a little vague, but I seem to recall in law school, which is a long time ago, reading an opinion by Mr. Justice Douglas in an environmental case where he, he made a case that trees have rights. And I was very much affected by that. I still feel the same way. And, and this, as has been stated by my colleagues here down the line, presents an excruciatingly difficult decision. I am, at the moment, although I'm going to ask it as a question, I'm, I'm inferring from what I've heard that the experts, number one, have been at this a long time, that they've concluded, first of all, most importantly, that this, this plan is the only way to achieve compliance with ADA requirements for access to the, to the library. And, and so I'm bundling the two projects together. I appreciate the way Dean separated them, but, but I'm bundling the two. And I do think it's extremely important that we move forward more generally to ADA compliance around the town. And this is a particular place where I think we're, I don't want to say delinquent, but it's time that we bring ourselves into compliance. I'm going to assume not only that that's the case, but also that it's basically the opinion of the experts who've spent all the time working on this, that there is no really realistic plan that takes account of the safety issues and, and the other considerations that need to be addressed that saves the tree. And I'd like somebody to say that's the case. Before you do that, before I turn it back to you, Terry, and, and your colleagues, I will also say, I walked by there today, somewhat in preparation for this meeting. And frankly, I'm not an arborist, and I'm not substituting myself as an expert. That's one of the things I think we need to avoid doing up here. We need to maybe test the views of, of the experts and the people charged with responsibility for projects. But we need to accept what they have to say. If, if it's reasonable and, and we have tested it, that tree does not look very good. I, you know, if it knew this hearing was going to take place today, I think it would have been in better condition than it really is. And, I mean, there are no leaves on it. It really does look somewhat stark. So I guess I'd also ask, has anybody looked at the tree today, in its condition today, and concluded that it's, you know, ready for another 50 or 100 years? Thank you.
Have to go up to the podium, please.
And thank you for the opportunity for your follow-up comments. I did inspect the tree today. While I am, I am not a certified tree risk arborist, there is visible decay on the sidewalk side of the root system. So there's visible decay in the root system. The tree itself could go another 50 years. In arboricultural circles, the caveat is always to remember, you can make a tree weather-resistant, but you cannot make it stormproof. So there's no guarantee that tree won't fail in a storm, as we've seen from various events. So yes, you could look at mitigation plans, change the construction layout, and really change the overall scope of the project, only to see the tree fail within a relatively short time period. So like you said, it's an excruciating decision to try to decide. Unfortunately, it's just too close to the sidewalk. And as Tom pointed out correctly, to excavate on that sidewalk aside, you're going to have to cut into the trunk itself, which will compromise the strength and health even further. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Thank you, and thank you for your comments, sir. They've been helpful. I think I'm on the side of, what Mike was saying is, the bottom line for me is if there is no other plan to redesign that we could do to accommodate the tree, you know, I feel like there, you know, then, then, you know, I have to feel like we have to let the tree go. But one of the things I, I was getting from the whole thing was the sidewalk, the root system, and then to hear that it has some degradation. I did, I walked by it today, too. I saw that it looked rather stark, and I don't know if it goes through any iterations. I know trees are, sometimes they all look like they're half-dead, and then all of a sudden, they flourish the next year. I had an apple tree that did that, and was, you know, I was very delighted by, by, by what happened. But I, I feel like, like everybody else, the safety issues and the compliance stuff, I only have to wonder, though, as this design was brought to us at town meeting, and we hadn't heard anything about the arborist report prior to this, or that this tree had this big risk of being taken down, whether we would have accepted this plan as it looks. So that's, that's just what's on my mind at this moment.
Yep. Thank you. I'll put my two cents worth in. I mean, I'm very sympathetic to all the positions on this. I mean, we have, you know, trees that have come down because of storms and what have you not. I walk by the tree pretty much every day. I have a little shame, I'm a shop down the street. I thought maybe if we could redesign, build that mound up, but the reality of it is those tree roots are so spread out, they're probably under the sidewalk, under the road. Any type of excavation in that area is going to be detrimental to this tree system. And if we do that, it's going to increase the risk of those trees coming down from a storm or whatever. So I, I'm more of the opinion that it's maybe time to move forward, plant the appropriate trees for future generations to see grow up and look at it 50, 100, 150 years from now. And also implement the recommendations from the Friends of Trees about reutilizing the tree wood. Make sure we have the specific species of the trees that we're going to replant, and hash those details out. But I do think it's time to move on with this plan. So that's, that's my position. I, you know, I'm very sympathetic to those who would like to see the tree, you know, stay, but I think it is time to move forward. So additional thoughts from the board?
Dean?
Mr. Chairman, I want to offer a motion.
Please.
I move that the select board, having considered the testimony and comments at the public hearing, vote to approve removal of the two public shade trees identified in the notice to allow full implementation of the library site master plan project.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it, but I want to add an amendment to it.
Okay, further discussion, go.
I think we should add in that the horse chestnut tree be, would be utilized for something that.
I'll second, I'll second that amendment.
And I would, if there's a way possible that the Friends of Trees are the ones that we can ask to, to, you know, if they're willing, or the Friends of the Eldridge Public Library, the trustees, make some recommendations as to how to use.
For clarification, the Friends of the Trees are going to be working in collaboration on the final plans anyway. So as part of that final discussion, that would be an appropriate item, items.
I'll second that amendment. I assume it's, it calls for consultation with Friends of Trees and the collaboration with the Library Board of Trustees.
Are we all in agreement?
Perfect.
Mike, and then Jeff.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement, but I, and this was the implication of your presentation, Terry, but I'd like to have a, for the record, an answer to the question I asked, which is that, on behalf of the experts, that it was the conclusion, all considerations having been studied and, and, and looked at and consulted, that this is pretty much the only way to go here.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, because you had that question hanging. So when we looked at, you know, a minimum.
Forgive me, but that was a yes or no question. So, but you go ahead and say what you want to say.
So yes, is the answer. But again, we looked at, you know, a six-foot impact zone, which is probably not enough for this size tree. And again, would have dramatic impacts on the redesign of the, of the project. You know, or, or not doing, say, the sidewalk in that area.
All right. So we have a motion, an amended motion in a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Select Board Member Nick Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Reluctantly, aye.
And Select Board Member Nettor says aye. So, all right. We have our second public hearing. If our clerk could read the hearing notice on the bike path one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Tree Warden will hold a public hearing on October 3, 2023, at 5:30 PM in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 87, during the regularly scheduled Chatham Select Board meeting, to listen to concerns over proposed public shade tree removal. The meeting will be held in the large conference room at the Town Office's Annex 261 George Rider Road. Proposed tree removal is to accommodate a new bike path along the eastern edge of George Rider Road. The proposed path will connect the existing trail at its terminus along the north side of Route 28 to the existing bike path crossing just south of the Chatham Airport. Thirty-two trees are proposed to be removed as part of this project. They vary in size and type and are listed in more detail below. For reference, Station 10+75 is at the northernmost driveway entrance to Ocean State Job Lot on George Rider Road, and stations or feet extend toward the northerly direction. And do you want me to read all the rest of these? There's a whole list of stations. Well, as listed.
As listed in the notice, yeah.
Okay. And then, a map indicating the location. Locations of the trees proposed for removal will be posted at the Town Office's 549 Main Street, Chatham, Mass., 02633, 5008, 945, 5100. The public is welcome to attend the meeting in person or via link in the meeting's posted agenda. All interested parties are encouraged to participate. Chatham Tree Warden.
Thank you very much. Do we have a presentation on this one? Rob, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. I don't have a fancy presentation, but I will just briefly outline the project and its impacts. So the Chatham Bike Ways Committee initiated the idea to make a bike path on George Rider Road, safe for all users while expanding the shared-use trail network. Funding in large part is through Mass. Trails, and two successive, successive annual town meetings have approved CPC funding as matching funding. So as the design progressed, we realized there were 32 trees that needed to be removed to construct the eight-and-a-half-foot-wide shared-use path. So this path will not only expand the shared-use paths in Chatham, but also provide a separate paved pedestrian facility. It's a safer alternative, and will allow residents and visitors alike to participate in healthy activities and walk to essential town services. Chatham DPW marked out the 32 trees in the field, posted the public notice in preparation of this hearing. Many of the existing trees slated for removal are along the edge of an existing wooded area or have been planted previously. Project is very straightforward. It's an eight-and-a-half-foot-wide paved path, separate from the road, separated by a six-inch vertical asphalt curb to keep pedestrians separate from vehicle traffic. The project is all but within the road layout, except for a small easement that we will, we're still working on with the Ocean State Job Lot parcel. It's really built out to the road layout. There's no room left to mitigate any plantings on-site. The scope of this project is relatively small, and all construction funding has been committed. So that's pretty much it. We're, it's a pretty straightforward project. Nobody's questioning the health of the trees. The trees are within the physical layout of the shared-use path.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to go to public comment. DeeDee, your correspondent, I'll have to call you up first so you can speak on your letter.
The removal, the removal of 32 trees came as a surprise to everyone once the design was revealed. The application to CPC did not address any tree loss, nor was it raised at the FinCom meeting. The DPW director, Rob, was also surprised how many trees were being, to be removed once he saw the design. And I believe some of the bikeway committee members also were unaware of the extent of the removal. Friends of Trees found out about this only a week or so ago. The extension of the bike trail will improve safety for cyclists and pedestrians. However, the number of trees taken is significant. Although these may not be specimen trees, they still provide environmental value, such as wildlife habitat, carbon storage, and stormwater absorption. More than half of them are greater than eight inches DBH in diameter. And the total mass of the 32 trees is almost 300 inches in diameter, about 24 feet. The figure, this figure does not even include the numerous shrubs and woody plants that would be taken. In total, this is a significant loss of biomass. We question, is there no recourse? What, what must the bike path be, eight-and-a-half feet? Is there no way to preserve the two large lindens that provide the only shade to the animal control building? What alternatives were considered? This matter clearly deserves more consideration, we believe. This is not an emergency, and not, no, there is no imminent danger. In addition, in addition to planting, the Tree Warden should commit, should commit to keeping trees alive. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Lost my place. If there is no feasible alternative to removing so many trees and an uncounted number of other plant material, then replacement of the biomass must be required. Friends of Trees believes that it is only prudent that before any vegetation is cut, the Tree Warden present to the select board a mitigation plan that defines the number of trees to be planted, the sizes, the species, and the locations of the new trees. The trees can be placed on property other than the location from where they're being taken, other town property, that is. There are several established methods for calculating the replacement requirements, and Friends of Trees offers to assist in this determination. And this would provide to, to the two trees at the library. In addition to planting, the Tree Warden should commit to keeping the trees alive for a minimum of three years. This requirement is consistent with the mitigation that was required for the removal of trees and. and shrubs along Middle Road for the installation of the new power poles. EverSource was required to replant native species and actively maintain the trees and shrubs for three years. It looks great, by the way, if you've been over there. In retrospect, it would have been preferable that the CPC request included the expense of replacing lost trees. It did not. We encourage the town to consider adding the cost of tree planting and maintenance to budgets for the Tree Warden and the Department of Public Works in the upcoming year. We hope the town will allocate more resources to maintaining and increasing Chatham's tree canopy, whether in woodlands, streetscapes, park, and other public lands. So in summary, what we request is that no decision be made tonight, that more consideration of the engineer plan be undertaken, and that alternatives be seriously considered. Once that is done, then we would request that the Tree Warden present a complete mitigation land, plant, tree replanting plan, showing the sizes, as I said earlier, and the replacement location of where all those trees would be. We think all of that needs to be done before this board should approve the removal of thirty-two trees. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, DeeDee. Yeah? Do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I do have.
Please.
I didn't know if you had questions for DeeDee.
Not at the moment.
Okay. My name is Dan Young. I'm on the board of Chatham's Friends of Trees. And there are several compelling reasons why mitigation is important and necessary. The current plan did not take into consideration mediation, mitigation, excuse me, and we feel that's a very important piece of any project when trees and shrubs are removed. The first reason is that planting, replanting of trees and shrubs is a component of the shade tree law. And second, the Cape Cod Commission has reported that during the 2001 to 2011 time period, more than 2,300 acres of forest cover has been lost on Cape Cod. And it is our belief that Chatham should not contribute to this continuing trend. Third, in just 2023 alone, the town has removed three large trees during the fish pier, stair, and parking lot rehab work, five large trees in Chase Park, and now we are discussing the removal of thirty-two trees along George Rider Road. In addition, no consideration has been given to the shrubs that are an important understory component of any rural treescape, and urban treescape as well. Taken in aggregate, this is more than a minimal environmental impact. And fourth, replanting is a sound environmental practice. And as DeeDee mentioned in the EverSource Middle Road project, Friends of Trees is available to collaborate with the town to create this mitigation plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Yes, sir.
I'm on the Chatham Bike Ways Committee and have been involved in the valuation of various options on this project, as well as the actual design of the project over the last several years. I appreciate the comments made by the Friends of Trees, and I don't have a challenge to make to that. I would make two points just to put this in a larger context. This project was conceived in a conceptual stage several years ago, driven largely by safety concerns. The Cape Cod, the Old Town Railroad runs down a portion of George Rider Road, and then there's a new, essentially multi-use path on Route 28 that was built by the state as a part of the West Chatham Project. So there's a safety factor with cyclists or walkers or runners extending their activities down George Rider Road by the Ocean State Job Lot to connect up to the new, and at this point, not well-used, multi-use path on Main Street. So partially, we're trying to extend the, an asset the town has, that is, the Old Town Railroad, to basically make it longer and provide access to the West Chatham area. Secondly, the primary driver is safety for users of the path as well, in lieu of the current status where cyclists, walkers, runners share the roadway with vehicles. And that would be probably the predominant mission on the part of the Bike Ways Committee to address that particular weakness. So I would offer those two comments and urge the board and the Tree Warden to consider those and counterbalance that with the concerns of the Friends of Trees. Thanks for your opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Questions from, yes?
Hi, Billy Bates from South Chatham. I was hoping there would be a plan here to look at, because I looked at the trees first and then went to the town hall and didn't realize they close at four. So it's kind of hard to talk about the plan when I haven't seen it. I did look online and wasn't able to find it. Oh, thank you. Somebody's going to show it to me.
Pictures here, and then this is the plan.
Okay, thank you. Oh, thank you. When I looked on George Rider Road, it seemed like, it seemed like this, the engineered plan is along the very edge of the road, because that's where all the trees were marked. But there's already a bike path behind there going by. So when I looked at it on a different map that I have at home, it was, I didn't have this plan. But it seems like whenever I see these, I looked at like hundreds of engineering plans in this town, and most of the time, it appears that the plan, there was no intent to address any trees that might be unusual or might be worth going around or to, like, to build the bike path. It just seemed like on paper, like, there's no, the trees, there's like dots on here that might be the trees, but there's just usually just no, no consideration of the actual trees on these plans. And I just don't understand why it appears that there's already a bike path that goes behind there that's already paved, and it comes quite close behind the harbor masters. I think it's where they have gear. And looking at a map of the area, I don't see why they can't, just can't extend the path from behind the harbor master and come right out through there. And then you wouldn't have to take all these trees down that are on Route 28, I mean, on George Rider Road. So there might be some reason for that, but I just, I think a lot of these projects that we try to do, it might behoove us to consider the natural aspects, like at the library, for example. I don't think anyone knew that the plan was to take the big tree down when it was approved. So that's my comment, and I do, I do think there isn't anyone that's arguing to not help the ADA or not put in a bike path. That's not anybody's intent when they're trying, when they're speaking up for trees. It has nothing to do with, we don't want to help bike riders, we don't want to help ADA. It's not that one bit. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Public comments here? Online?
We have Elaine Gibbs online.
Ms. Gibbs, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, as it relates to this one, I'm really concerned about the total lack of transparency for the voters. If you go back to the annual town meeting, Article 30 was just to take a 225-square-foot easement, and then Article 57, it simply said $88,000 from CPA funds. No mention was made in the article of any tree removal, and it was part of the consent agenda. And so it passed unanimously. Had anybody known that thirty-two shade trees were going to be taken down in the process, I am confident many people would have asked for it to be taken off the consent agenda, and I believe it would have failed. Those twelve trees, the cedar trees that are budding the Ocean State Job Lot property, if you look at them, they're cedar trees, they're in perfectly good shape, they're beautiful, and they shield the parking lot from George Rider Road. That's like a five- or six-foot drop, and once they apparently build that out, they're going to have to put a fence there, because there's no room to plant any mitigating trees, and you're going to be looking down on the cars. And then the other number of 25 or whatever it is going down almost to the airport. I don't know at what point that you say enough is enough. That entire West Chatham corridor between the roundabouts and all the construction, we have lost dozens and dozens of trees there. And every time something like this happens, we replace green space and trees with asphalt and painted sidewalks with bicycle drawings and arrows and such. And at what point do we say no? If we're concerned about the environment, if we're concerned about green space, if we're concerned about the natural beauty of Chatham, at some point, we have to say no. And I think in this situation, where we were not told about this before we were asked to vote, and it's the same with the library, I think Ms. Davis brought it up, had we known that those trees were going to be impacted, we would have said, go back to the drawing board and come up with a different plan. And particularly here, with the number of trees that are going to be impacted and change it forever, it is turning into a wasteland down there. So I hope you will at least postpone it or outright say no on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine. Additional online comments? I'm going to want to stay online right now.
Gloria Freeman?
Ms. Freeman?
Hi, yes, thank you, Gloria Freeman. The first thing I'd like to do is thank the Friends of Trees. Chatham is very fortunate to have a private nonprofit organization which provides extraordinary service to the town. I understand that the proposed construction project demands the removal of thirty-two trees, but I'd ask you, Dan, as our Tree Warden and our Select Board members, are you absolutely sure that every one of those trees must be removed? And what would be done during construction to protect other trees that are not slated for removal? I'd also like to know if removal of this number of trees will increase noise pollution from the airport for neighbors and their property values. I think that many trees provide a sound barrier. You said that this is a matter of safety, but was there any collaboration with the development of the trail system? I suppose, as a previous speaker stated, that you've assumed approval was based, that you've assumed approval because Article 57 of the warrant for town meeting of May 2023 was approved. But as you've heard, nothing was included in that article, which, again, you've previously heard, was not discussed because it was included in the consent agenda. It should have been pulled out, but everyone was focused on the COA at 1610 article. However, keep in mind, nothing was indicated that we would lose thirty-two trees. I wasn't able to find the mitigation plan for this either, but Chapter 87 of Mass. General Laws does provide the Tree Warden with authority to plant shade trees in a public way upon adjoining land, of course, with the written consent of the owner of such adjoining land. And maybe there is a possibility that that could be achieved. I hope that if these trees are to be removed, and I hope they won't, that it won't be until we see a mitigation plan for the necessary construction and for trees of sizable caliber to keep that east side of George Rider Road green. Of course, that management is part of this water, watering, I think I've read, for three years or more, and assuring good soil. Again, thanks to the Friends of Trees for their excellent recommendations. I totally concur. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional online comments? None? Okay, there was a hand up. John, please.
John Hargren, South Chatham. Yeah, when I looked at the plans online, you know, and other than the trees by Job Lot and the two in front of the Animal Control Building, apparently, the other ones, if they were gone, or if they're there, I wouldn't even notice the difference, because there's so many behind them. So, and my attitude is, you know, if they're in the tree, basically, if they're in the town right away, they really shouldn't be there in the first place. So, yeah. I would, don't know if there's any way to do something to more visually, and there's also the fact that there's really to get connection from the bike path where it is up there down to 28. I don't see, basically, there is no other way to get from point A to point B other than putting in this little connector piece. And then I don't see it potentially being in any other location. I don't think it could go on the other side of the road. So unfortunately, I think, you know, you're sort of, if you want to connect that path to get people down to 28, I don't see any way around it. Now, down by Job Lot, yeah, I'm not sure if there could be some sort of, maybe a more visual, like some sort of a, bit of a barricade or fence or something like that to at least provide a little bit of a visual buffer there, but that's the only thing I would maybe think about. Thanks.
Thank you, John.
Ellen Briggs with her hand up.
Ellen, please go ahead.
Thank you again for letting me speak on this behalf of the George Rider Road issue with the trees. I'm a biker, I love the bike path, but oh my goodness, it's, so much has been said so clearly, and I think it behooves you as a body to go back to the drawing board and come up with a mitigation plan that may be a compromise, but certainly not to proceed as it stands now. So I ask you to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ellen. Okay, anyone else? Okay, to the board. Questions or comments from the board? Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a bit to say here. The extension along George Rider Road from the airport area or where it ends at the airport and before it goes back into the woods, so from the woods down into the rotary, is a critical extension of the bike path for a couple of different reasons. I forget what the counts were this summer, I think we did counts. The bike path is extraordinarily busy during July and August, extraordinarily, thousands of, they did a Saturday count, John, if you remember, I don't have the numbers right in front of me. But it wasn't just bikers, it's walkers. And I'm known to walk down that corridor, and I'll tell you right now, there are hundreds of walkers in July and August going by that stretch. And they don't all cut into the woods to do on the bike path, they cut down to West Chatham, and there's no sidewalk there, if you will. So the access for the public, for residents, nonresidents, tourists, the traffic is heavy and intense, especially July and August. traffic is heavy and intense, especially July and August. And this piece of roadway is needed. This sidewalk is desperately needed, I'm telling you right now. Now, I totally agree with the Friends of Trees, and if we buy the logic of mitigation, which I do, I've got a whole host of places in this town where we can replace that biomass. I'll tell you right now, and I'm the liaison of the Seaside Links to the Golf Committee, but we had folks that girdled trees at the Seaside Links, girdled them dead, and they stand as testimony to some egregious acts in this town. I'd be more than happy to bring this issue to the Seaside Golf Committee so that we could plant trees, and we've planted some, we planted some arbovites, some fast-growing arbovites, but I'd love to see more trees planted there so they can get in the face and the way of those houses or those somehow, those trees that got girdled, that were blocking views down on the Seaside Links. So I'm going to offer that. There are other areas in this town where we can plant the biomass to replace the biomass that's being taken away. The small pines and the, I agree with John, the linden trees and the cedars there are really nice trees. I get it, and I hate to see them cut down. But the rest of the trees there from the towns, the towns' property up to the bike path, you won't even notice they're gone, to be honest with you. They're scrub pines, and they can be replaced with some plants, some tasteful plantings as well as you go internally. So I am in favor of this project. I'm not in favor of its redesign. It's been approved by town meeting. It's a good project. It's desperately needed, especially in the summer months. So I think it's a project that can go forward, and we should have approval by Friends of Trees with a mitigation plan included in any kind of motion that we bring forward this evening. I'd be more than happy to do that when the time has come. Thank you.
Shereen.
I'm not going to reiterate what Jeff said because I totally agree with him. But I do want to say one point is, you know, we're still working on the Ocean State Job Lot negotiation for easement there, so there's no reason why we can't put this on pause until we have a mitigation plan that works.
Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question, I guess to the Public Works Director. So there's funding for, that is listed in the memo from three, in three categories, including a Massachusetts Trails grant of $715,000. If this project were delayed for purposes of trying to make some adjustments to the current proposal or to work in a mitigation plan, let's say in consultation with the Friends of Trees and the Bike Ways Committee, are those funding sources impacted?
That funding source expires June 30, 2024. So there is, I just received stamped engineered plans for the bike path construction. We were hoping to put it out to bid in the next week or two, depending, you know, based on the outcome of this hearing. Knowing that the Ocean State Job Lot easement is still up in the air, we could do that with risk or eliminate that small piece of the bike path through a change order until such a time we actually did get an easement. You know, I was talking before about onsite mitigation is not possible, but it's certainly up to the board whether you wanted to consider offsite mitigation.
Is the Mass Trails Grant predicated upon the plan as proposed?
No, it's a little bit more loosely defined, but we're basically maxed out on the capacity unless we had additional funding.
For further design?
For further design, or if we change the design. It would cost more money, and we just don't have that additional money in our budget right now.
Okay. But it would be possible to work on a mitigation plan?
If we can work on it independently, aside from the bike trail or the shared-use path project?
Does the construction have to be completed by June 30, 2024?
Yes, it's got to be completed and invoiced, basically.
Okay.
So we're on a fast track, and I understand it's, you know, it's something we've been working on for some time, and it's just, we only identified the trees earlier this summer.
Okay.
It wasn't identified before town meeting.
Okay, thank you. Well, Mr. Chairman, I mean, this is a bit of a quandary, but I would hate to lose this funding. And the project in and of itself has considerable merit. I would like to see some sort of a mitigation plan. Mr. Dykens proposed one possibility in terms of the golf course, which is town property. I'm inclined to support this, but I do it with some reluctance because I wish there were an alternative available to, in addition to mitigation, to perhaps coming up with some adjustments, maybe in the number of trees, I don't know, or the location of the trees. The property, then Ms. Bates spoke about the current bike path, I assume the property to the east of that is private property, most of it, except for the Harbor Master Building.
Yeah, from the Harbor Master up through the existing trail crossing is town property.
Okay.
Yeah, Animal Control, I'm sorry. Somebody said Harbor Master.
But there's a lot of trees there anyway right now.
There are. It's a very wooded area.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mike.
Yeah, again, I'm very sympathetic. First of all, I want to say, the whole mitigation point brought up by the Friends of Trees, I'm 100% in support of. I think that's a good idea, and I'm glad you brought it up. I'm also in favor, however, of getting projects done. And this one, before I even heard what Rob had to say about funding, from my perspective, June 30, getting this done by next summer when all the people come and use it is an independent motivation for me. So I would, to be very clear, I would like to have a mandate here that the relevant town officials would enter into a discussion with Friends of Trees and whoever else is appropriate to develop a so-called mitigation plan, to find places where the mitigation can be accomplished, to develop a budget proposal for this year that would accommodate that. I'm in favor of all of that, but that it not be in any way linked to the approval of the project going forward so they can get their, they can get their RFPs out in a timely way and keep this project on track. I think it would be a great disservice to the effort and safety and all of those considerations if we were to interject this process so that, basically, we had essentially said that nothing can be done until the mitigation plan is developed and priced and included in the budget. That, to me, would be a great mistake and an unfortunate development. Thank you.
Well, I am supportive of the project. I would like to see it done at some point. Fully supportive of some kind of mitigation plan on offsite town property. And that's probably a policy discussion in general with the board should have, for any future projects, how we want to address it, how we want to designate certain locations, species, the whole nine yards. So that's probably a bigger discussion a little bit later on. But the one thing that has been brought up a couple of times that I, before I vote, I need crystal clear clarification, is it's been mentioned that during the review by the various boards and committees, FinCom, even into town meeting, even our DPW director, that the element of significant number of trees being cut down was not even a factor in the reviews or consideration. And I'd love for someone just to clarify, is that an accurate description of the process coming up to where we are now?
So unlike many construction plans that kind of develop over years, this is a relatively simple scope. It's, you're basically paving an eight-foot path on the side of the road. And so the final survey and all that wasn't picked up until the spring. And as the plans were developed, that's when it was decided that those trees had to go. And that wasn't until, I would say, August, when we first heard about it. But we didn't have a real definition to really come up with the scope of how many trees and what type of species and all that. So it's been an ongoing thing. We really didn't find out about it until sometime over the summer. I don't have an exact date for you.
Okay. Just finish my thought, because, I mean, we have the designation of Tree City USA, which we've been awarded, you know, which is a very proud designation for the town. Having elements of, you know, a couple of trees down, I can see, when you have 32 trees, whether they are species, you know, whatever species they are, I think that part of the conversation would have been relevant throughout, you know, for square one. Unfortunately, this article did get put into a consent agenda, so it most likely would have been pulled out for, you know, consideration as a standalone article at town meeting if a lot of trees were going to be coming down, known a lot of trees were coming down. So I do have some issue supporting this at the moment. I think in the long term, I'd like to see it done. But that is a philosophical hurdle for me to support this. So that's my position. So I think, Mike, you have a question?
Just apropos that, I mean, if somebody had done the survey back way back when, there's not, other than the mitigation issue, there's, I mean, it's not as if it could be put anyplace else. I mean, it is where it is, and it was going to be there all along. It's just a question of when the survey work was done and the focus on the trees was brought to the forefront. Am I misapprehending here?
No, you're absolutely correct.
And so I guess I would say, Corey, say it's unfortunate, it is whatever it is, but giving up the funding against the principle that, you know, woulda, coulda, shoulda, I would submit, it would be unfortunate.
I appreciate your position, and I know I'm putting myself out there, but I know I'm going to be outvoted four to one. But I got to stand by where I stand. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment, and I'll make a motion as well.
Please.
I think, given the history of working closely with Friends of Trees, especially on the mitigation plan that occurred onsite at Middle Road, but this mitigation plan will have to occur offsite somewhere. I think, given that history also, I think one can take great comfort in moving this project forward and also working closely with the Friends of Trees as we go forward with a really thoughtful mitigation plan. So I would like to offer a motion.
Please.
I'd like to recommend that the Select Board, after considering testimony at the conclusion of our public hearing, vote affirmatively to approve the removal of the 32 public shade trees identified in the notice to allow for the construction of the George Rider Road shared-use path.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Have they already spoken? Okay, we're going to move to a vote, please. We have a motion on the table, and we have a second. The board ready to vote?
Yes.
Selective Member De Castro?
Aye.
Selective Member Davis?
Aye.
Selective Member Dykens?
Aye.
Selective Member Burchell?
Aye.
Chair Metters says nay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would also like to place a future agenda item, if you are patient with me, that we charge the town officials, the most responsible tree warden, conscom if possible, if necessary, working closely with the Friends of Trees to develop a mitigation plan for, to replace the biomass taken away from the 32 trees being removed from George Rider. If somebody wants to fashion that in better English, please go ahead.
Do you not want to make that a resolution?
Want to make.
That we, that we
Yes.
Direct them to do that. And I'd like to add to it that there be some periodic reporting back to this board of progress of the development of the mitigation plan, whether it's monthly or biweekly or whatever, but I think there should be a reporting requirement as well.
And that's why I kind of mentioned agenda item, but I want to.
Procedural question. Does the tree warden have some of that authority to take that upon his own action? I just want to put clarification. Dan?
I don't have a specific to it. Normally, that would be a requirement, though, in previous tree hearings that we've had with private residents and things like that, is including mitigation as part of the project. I realize that this is sort of a roundabout way to achieve that end, but I think, you know, the motions that I'm hearing here would be important consideration to this, to this project. Yes.
All right.
So I think I misstated, I said agenda item. I think it's a resolution. We'd like to direct the town officials, including the town manager, to direct staff to come up with a mitigation plan to replace the biomass of the 32 trees that are taken away from George Rider Road and report back to the Select Board.
And in consultation with trees, Friends of Trees?
Yeah, certainly, absolutely.
Okay, so we.
I'm assuming that's a motion.
It is a motion.
Motion. Do we have a second? Further discussion? Do we want to broaden that for any future projects? Do we want to keep that narrow just for this one, or do we want to add that as an additional conversation down the road?
Keep it tight.
What I would do is, I think broadening it is a good idea. I would make that a future agenda item for a policy discussion on that subject.
That's fair enough. It isn't one to get lost in. So, okay, so we have a resolution strictly on Jeff's motion. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion. All those in favor? Selective Member De Castro?
Aye.
Selective Member Davis?
Aye.
Selective Member Dykens?
Aye.
Selective Member Burchell?
Aye.
And Selective Member Metters does say aye. Okay. Public hearings are closed. We're going to move on to our public comment on our business agenda. As I mentioned earlier, the local emergency evacuation shelter item G is going to get moved up to just after item D, opioid settlement committee update. And during that agenda item, I will allow public comment. So you can make public comment now during the public comment and business agenda items for the entire business agenda, or wait until item G is called. So at the moment, I'm going to open it up for public comments on our business agenda. From the public in house tonight, anyone have a question or comment? Anyone from the audience?
Mr. Chair, Ellen Briggs's hand is up. I'm not sure if that was from.
Ellen, do you have a question? Or Ellen? I'll take that as a no. Okay. With that being said, we're going to move into our business agenda. First item is the open of the 2023-24 base golf season. We have our Shellfish Constable, Renee Gagne, online?
I'm right here, yes. Good evening. And this is our annual request to see if the board will open base golf season on Wednesday, November 1, 2023.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board? Would anyone entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, respectfully recommend that the board approve the opening day of base golf season on November 1, 2023, and sign the attached shellfish rules and regulations scops for the 2023-2024 season.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Selective Member De Castro?
Aye.
Selective Member Davis?
Aye.
Selective Member Dykens?
Aye.
Selective Member Burchell?
Aye.
Selective Member Metters says aye. Next item, consider a special one-day alcohol permit for October 21, 2023, the Oktoberfest, December 8 and 9 of 2023 for the holiday stroll, December 31, 2023, and January 1, 2024, quote, "first night" to Brian Volkle from Mahi Gold.
Mr. Chair, can I, I'm
Hey, guys.
Excuse me. I need to recuse myself from the first Oktoberfest.
So start with, let's see where we go. Hold on, did I get ahead of myself?
Wait a minute.
These are all from Mahi Gold, correct?
Yes.
Yes, these are all from Mahi Gold. Okay. Brian, go ahead.
Hey, guys, can you hear me? This is actually Sam Johnson. I'm speaking for Brian and Mahi Gold tonight.
Thank you.
I am Director of Operations for Mahi Gold, and so we are looking to, for your consideration, to have the one-day special permit for alcohol on the 21st, as you said, on October, December 8th and 9th of the holiday stroll weekend, and then again on December 31st and the 1st, the first night. As we've done this in years past, we're just looking for the approval to do it again this year.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Dean?
Mr. Chairman, I'm supportive. I just had a question. I don't, the licensing agent is not here, but I wondered whether this constitutes three or four permits, because you have two days in December 8 and 9.
Answer that. It is four permits.
It's four permits.
It is. Each day is an individual permit.
Okay, so that would, you know, add up against the total of 10 that they're allowed. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board grant a special, a one-day special permit to Brian Volkle of Mahi Gold, 465 Main Street, for wine and malt beverages only for the following dates and times. October 21, 2023, from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.; December 8 and 9, 2023, from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. each day; December 31, 2023, and January 1, 2024, 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. each day, served in store. That's first night.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all those, or additional comments? All those in favor? Selective Member De Castro?
Aye.
Selective Member Dykens?
Aye.
Selective Member Burchell? Selective Member Shell?
Aye.
And Selective Member Metter says aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, good luck. Next on our agenda, agenda item is a consider acceptance of gift from Ari Ellen Sobel of two planters to be placed in Chase Park.
Good evening, Board, thanks for taking your time to review my proposal. Originally, my, my name is Mary Ellen Sobel, I'm from Chatham myself, and I take this opportunity, I'm in the Chatham Garden Club, so I, luckily, or hopefully, you're seeing our T-shirts around town as we're working on the various gardens, but I'm here tonight is because I've been assigned for years working at Chase Park, it's, it's my love, I spend a lot of time there, and there are a lot of improvements that we've done over the years, so I can just tell you from my heart, my heart is there, and I just want good things for Chase. So I go to the, the next slide, let's see, go to this slide, there we go. So this is just an example, when you walk into Chase Park, the front gardens we worked on, the side gardens, and this is again in collaboration with the Chatham Garden Club, so that, just to give you an idea. This slide just kind of shows you, as you're, as you're standing at the front gate, the benches are there, but it's rather plain, and it, it just called, called my attention, perhaps we could pretty it up a little bit and add something there. This is an example of one of the lanterns, it's just a classic Grecian style, and when I took it, one of my several trips to going to Ague, I happened to notice they had two of these very pretty urns, they're, they're heavy, they're cast stone, they're good quality, they're pretty substantial. I have the measurements here, which I presented to the Parks and Rec on September the twenty-fifth to their, to their board, and I went over all the information in, in regard to the urns, they are still, I purchased them, just, I just fell in love with them and I thought would be a good idea, so, so I figured, I'll try, if, if they'll be accepted for Chase, I bought them, they're, they're at Ague, I had, and I visit them many times, just to see them there, and I can tell you a little bit more about them. So I went back to visit them, and I put some planters in, and then I superimposed them in the park just to tell you, or what they would potentially look like, I know it looks a little bit like Monty Python, if you've ever, so it's a little hard to do in super, superimposition, but anyway, gives you the gist of the idea. I went back to the park after I found some pretty nice platforms, and I can't bring the urns there, but I brought plants that I already bought there, just to see, a little bit, they're lined up with the lanterns and the benches, to give you a rough idea how they would look, and then, well, the way that they're lined up now, obviously, it's subject to approval, but I have them six, six feet from the benches, so the, the department, Public Works can put the lawnmower through and tend, tend to around it, the grass around it, so that they wouldn't be obscuring that. Also, when they have the, the Festival of the Arts in the summer, that the tents are well behind there, so they wouldn't be obstructing any of the tents or the passerby that stroll along the sidewalk. There's just my husband there, he's measuring the top of the, the measuring tape, shows you how high the urns would be with the planters in them, so, and you get a perspective of how far it is from the gate, so, let's see. And then, I, I just put that into light side, I just love Chase Park, so that's my thing, I just get a kick out of it, and then I created another slide, just to show you what the platforms look like, if you had any questions, specifics about them, how they would be cared for, generally, when you have, I've spoke to the, them at Ague, and they said that care of them really should not be on the grass, so that's why I bought professional flagstones at a professional landscaping place, I bought those, and there's two of those, and then I bought some coverings for them, that they would be wrapped up, I mean, everything is just subject to approval, but, so, that's basically my slideshow, and for consideration, so, if you have any specific questions, let me know.
Well, thank you for your presentation. Questions for the board? Shireen?
Hi, thank you very much, just a couple of questions on...
Sure.
So you're recommending acceptance of a gift of two planters?
Yes.
Just two?
The two urns, yeah.
Okay, and so you, 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 you want to place them in, in an area that's towards the entrance of the park?
Yeah, I've, yes.
Okay, and so I guess one of my concerns is, did you show the design layout to the people at the Creative Arts Center and get their recommendation on whether those were going to interfere with any tents or not, or was it just, you know, just a sort of a ballpark?
Well, actually, this summer I did go to the Arts Festival, because I had bought, I had purchased them in July, and from what I saw, the tents were well behind there, the people were sitting on the benches that were strolling along and visiting the festival, so they would be well out of the way, I, I met with the Department of Parks and Rec, and I, I talked about that as well, because they asked me that, and I addressed that, so.
I, I understand, I just have a little concern that they are additional, sort of like, something that somebody would have to walk around if there was a tent set up there, or there was another activity, and that, that was just wondering if you had gotten any feedback from the Creative Arts Center people on whether they felt that that was going to be an impediment to, to their projects at all, to the festival at all.
Yeah, I, I can do that, certainly.
Yeah. Okay, those are, those are my questions.
Okay, Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Ms. Sobel, I just, one question, so when you went to the Parks and Rec Commission?
Yes.
Did they see the location that you were proposing?
Yes, well, they, personally, we didn't go to the park together, but I gave them the measurements, I showed them the slides, I gave them, their questions were specifically how far they were from the front gate, how far between the urns, would there be enough for a lawnmower to go through, and, and the, the questions or the answers to those were yes, they, they were considered.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate your interest in beautifying Chase Park, which, I'm in that neighborhood, so it's one of the prettiest places in Chatham.
Yeah, that's, it's my love.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Metter, as I move, I move to accept the gift from the Chatham Garden Club of two planters to be placed in Chase Park as discussed, and I want to thank Mary Ellen Sobel.
Second.
Second. I think for clarification, the actual gift is actually coming from Mary Ellen Sobel, yes, yes. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor? Selective Member De Castro?
Aye.
Selective Member Davis?
Aye.
Selective Member Dykens?
Aye.
Selective Member Shell?
Aye, I just want to add my thanks as well.
And Selective Member Metter says aye, thank you very much. Next is the opioid settlement committee update from our health agent, Judy Giorgio, good evening, welcome back.
Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself.
Yes.
Hi, thank you. So as you know, I represent the opioid settlement work group, we had a great group of town employees and volunteers with interest and concern on how we use the opioid funds, the settlement funds. The town so far has received about seventy-four thousand dollars that we need to start dispersing to check, to use in the areas of harm reduction, education, support, treatment, recovery, implement prevention, education, those types of things, and we, we probably this year will be getting another twelve thousand dollars, and over the next fifteen years, we're going to accumulate about three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. So we put the work group together, and we met over a course of about eight months, and we met with different groups in the community and around Barnstable County that came and discussed with us their ideas and the recommendations that we put together to start, to start using the, the money, was for three, three recommendation, three ideas, the first one was Outer Cape Health, having a recovery coach program, which would be a staffed person in Chatham, point three full-time equivalent hours per week, it, it would be someone who would sit somewhere in Chatham, the downtown building, who could work for, for the community and be there for people that have concerns or recovery issues, they can guide them to where they need to be. And we're recommending that also, as part of that, that we put five thousand dollars into a fund that could be used to, to get by barriers to care, such as transportation, rent, kennels, if they had pets, things that would keep people from getting to where they need to be for recovery services. So that, we're, working with that, we were thinking a three-year commitment to this program, we want something that has continuity, so that we're not just one-and-done one year, something that we can build up in town and can work with our incoming mental health specialists that we are going to be hiring. The second thing would be working with the fishing, fishing partnership, they've asked for five thousand dollars to do naloxone and needle risk harm reduction trainings, we felt that that would be a, a great way to educate our, our citizens on how to use naloxone and the myths surrounding it, and so that is our second recommendation, and the third would be to provide the behavioral health innovators a program, a program that's on Cape Cod, that does some really great work in the communities on the Cape, they've met with the Human Services Committee as well, and they've asked them to develop some programs specifically for Monomoy Middle School, so we thought we, for this first round, we would give them five thousand dollars to start developing those types of programs. I can answer any questions you have?
All right, thank you, Judy, questions from the board? Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Judy, I just had a question, did we investigate kind of a regional approach, working with Harwich and or Orleans, is how we spend these dollars, I think there's, you know, I, I think there's more power and more money aggregated together, and perhaps, you know, bigger bang for the buck?
Yeah.
Could we talk to Harwich at all?
There's been some discussion among the health agents, and I know the, the program with the Outer Cape Health, they're doing a similar thing in Harwich and some of the other towns, having a recovery coach and a navigator-type program, so it, it is somewhat regional, because, you know, we'll have the same things available. I think moving forward, once we get the programs off the ground, and we start having less money coming in over the years, it, I think we're going to be looking at some more regional ways, so that we do get more bang for the buck on a, on a regional basis, but yeah, that is something that DPH does encourage, is to, looking at regional programs.
And, and the, the fishermen, five thousand dollars, I said that's for training?
It would be training, it would, yes, so it would give them money to, to train their people, and then train our public, the fishing community, as well as citizens, restaurant, any businesses.
That, that was my question and my point, I mean, it's under the auspices of the, of the fishing partnership, but should it not be engaging all our citizens, or more of our citizens?
No, it certainly will be open to, that's what we, we're going to encourage, that we, we have educational programs that will provide that type of training for the public, and we can even, if we, you know, for the schools as well, if, if they were interested in having that.
And do the behavioral health innovators, do they also service the high school, the regional high school, not just the middle school?
Yeah, I believe they have programs, they have some programs that are based in Barnstable, where they take kids that are threatened of being thrown out of school, and they bring them to a special program, so that instead of being evicted, or, you know, expelled from school, they can work, work with, with this program and, and avoid that, they do work with the high school, I believe.
Yeah.
But there's nothing specific that I know of that they're doing right now at the middle school, but there's been, there's been interest in that.
Yeah, they, they service a little, little bit I'm familiar with.
And we did, we did look into the APG group, that's basically run by Duffy Health Center, but we felt like they, they were pretty well-funded at this point, and we wanted to try and kind of keep it in the Chatham area more, and we're totally supportive of that program, it's, it's fabulous.
Judy, I, I do want to emphasize that going forward, when these funds start drying up, I guess in two years or three years, I think a regional approach is, is needed.
Mm-hmm.
That's my studied opinion, to be honest with you.
I agree.
You need to pool your resources in order to get bang for your buck.
Right, I agree.
All right, thanks, Judy.
Rick? Just a question about the, the, the one at the program at the middle school, is that, would you characterize that as more prophylactic, and maybe in answering that, you could suggest what some of the, the bases or the basis for believing that's a, that's something that needs attention?
I, I think, I mean, it's going to be an educational program, we don't know exactly what it is, it'd be something that we would have to get more details on, from behavioral health innovators, to before we would actually give them the funds, so, but we're hoping that it would be, you know, a type of a program that would help kids that are already having issues, and then also do education.
Thank you.
Okay, additional questions or comments for everyone? Anyone want to entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I will move that the board, that, that the board supports staff moving forward with the agreements as proposed and discussed.
All right, do I hear a second?
A second.
Further discussion?
I have a question.
Yep.
Judy, on the, on the last one, the behavioral health innovators at the middle school, will that have consultation with the school district, are they supportive of it?
Oh, certainly, we would have to, we would, they are supportive of it, from what I know, and they're looking for that type of help and training, so.
Thank you.
An additional comment, thank you, Dean, this, this program needs to be very closely tied to the region, the regional schools.
Yes.
Okay, and, and you working closely with them, or I think it's really important?
You know, we've spoken with the, the youth services, Sheila House...
Yeah, she's no longer there, yep.
And she's retired now, but the new person that comes in, we certainly will be working with her to, to develop programs, and I know Harwich, I've spoken with the Harwich Health Agent, and they have similar, they want to do similar things with their money, so, Monomoy school system is important to, to help fund in these educational programs.
Okay, thank you, Judy.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor? Selective Member De Castro?
Aye.
Selective Member Dykens?
Aye.
Selective Member Shell?
Aye.
Selective Member Metter says aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to move, like I mentioned before, we're going to move item G up, local emergency evacuation shelter, policy discussion, Emergency Management Director Justin Tavano is in the audience present, he's available for any questions if we, the board has it, we have a memo in our packet, you know, this is the discussion that's been kicked around for, you know, quite some time, basically, you know, winter is approaching us, we should kind of discuss the policy discussion at hand, you know, all those who have read the memo, basically, the, the nut and bolts of it, we, you know, we, we do have, you know, there's a very distinct difference between a shelter and like a warming center, or a charging center, or stuff like that, so as far as a shelter, an official shelter, staff with all the appropriate staff, trained in all the appropriate manners, our best option at the moment is the Cape Cod Technical Regional School in Harwich, if an event happens that comes to that level, they are the best equipped for our region, for the citizens of Town of Chatham. A warming center, we have the community building, which we've used before, it does have some limitations, we've had certain, you know, certain, certain team volunteer their time and efforts, and it's been successful in the past occasions that we had had to utilize that, for that occasion. So the question for the board is, you know, based on the recommendation from our, our fire chief, are we comfortable moving forward with the regional approach for the, to that school? Do we at some point in time want to consider, if there's ever an option, be any municipal building that would be used as a shelter, which is a totally different thing than a warming center, as I mentioned before? Currently, all our buildings that we do have in our inventory, none of which are fully to the level of what a shelter would qualify under. The closest one building we have is the Monomoy Middle School on Crow Road, it is the closest facility to come to all the requirements, it is only lacking the generator, because the generator that is in the building right now is a bare-bones system, it would not be equipped to do the heating and services that we would need for a shelter, so, you know, we... So, you know, we, if we would, if we want to go in that direction, it's something we need to kind of queue up for a budget discussion further down the road. But basically, that is, that is the cards that are on the table right now. We probably should start thinking of this as a policy discussion because even though it is early October, mother nature can be nasty around here, and they could either throw us a twister in, you know, a couple months, or we could be walking around in shorts and t-shirts in January for all we know. So with all that being said, I would appreciate any questions or comments from the board. Dean, I mean, Jeff, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Metter. So how many of the other towns, surrounding towns that use the regional shelter at the tech school have their own individual shelter in their town?
None that I am aware of.
And how many across the Cape who use regional centers for sheltering have their own individual shelter in their town?
Chief is stepping up. I'll defer to him, none that I'm aware of, but.
So will we be the only town on the Cape with their own individual shelter in our midst?
Good evening, good evening, everybody.
I'm asking you that question. Good evening.
So I don't have a specific count on how many in which towns support their own local shelter. I do know that our surrounding towns, you know, as fire chiefs, we meet both informally, regularly, almost weekly, and formally, monthly, and we discuss these issues. We're all facing the same issues and concerns and challenges. And, you know, as recently as today, I had a conversation with the Orleans Fire Chief on what their contingency plans are. They don't have a local shelter. Harwich has the regional shelter, it happens to be in their town, but there's not many towns outside of the ones that are hosting the regional shelters that have their own specific local shelter.
Thank you, Chief. That answered my question. Thank you.
Actually, Chief, while you're up there, would it be safe to, just reading your memo, would it be safe to say that if the desire to have a local shelter, the biggest hurdle is a stable, sustainable resources for not only volunteers, but volunteers of certain levels of qualifications and focal points for training, services, and whatever, that we frankly don't have the stability to offer at the moment where the local, I mean, the regional shelters fortunately enough are able to provide that type of service? Is that, is probably the biggest hurdle that we would be facing?
Yeah, it's always been one of the biggest challenges. It's the challenge that every town faces and why most towns aren't leaning towards providing local shelters. You know, we don't, we look at it as a maximization of resources and personnel. So aside from just the personnel piece, there's other equipment that goes in there. There's durable medical equipment, wheelchairs to move residents around once they're there, the cots, the crates. We have some of that in our cash in town, but, you know, when we can, when we can share these resources regionally, they go a lot, a lot further. When you look at anecdotally, as I mentioned in the memo, the turnout at these shelters is often very low. You know, what we try to do, what we strive to do is open up the personal care sites during the daytime hours to give people a place to go to get warm, to get cool, to charge, but also to regroup and work with the staff there and with our staff in the emergency operations center to try to find the next best place to go, because those places are going to close before bedtime. So we try to get them in there, we work with them and try to find the next best place for them to go. But to answer your question, yeah, the staffing is always the biggest challenge.
Okay. Shereen?
If there was a catastrophic event that happened in the town of Chatham and the whole region, would we not open up our public buildings for folks to have a place to be?
I mean, I think one of the things that I'm trying to do here is build some resiliency and not solely rely on the regional shelter. Right now, as the chair mentioned, we're fortunate that those organizations are able to support the volunteer staff and bring in staffing from around the region for Hurricane Lee. Fortunately, it didn't hit us, but the Red Cross was bringing in volunteers from across New England to help support coastal communities. So one of the things that we're doing, you know, we put forth an effort last year to put out a survey to all town staff to see who might be interested in participating on the emergency management team, not just from, you know, a leadership standpoint with emergency operations center and kind of logistics, but also who might be interested in assisting with these personal care sites and potentially sheltering. So it starts with kind of identifying some folks, and then we have to provide them training. It's not as simple as just opening doors and saying, "Come on in and, you know, you're on your own." These are typically our most vulnerable people that have a lot of functional needs and need a lot of assistance. So providing people the appropriate training is critical. But to get back to your original question, if we had a catastrophic event tomorrow, you know, we would, we would have to pivot. We have our cert team. We wouldn't necessarily have full access. If the regional shelter were to open, they are committed to supporting that regional shelter. We do have Chatham residents that are on that team that we could hopefully pull to focus on just Chatham. But the first place we would go is the regional shelter if it opened. If it weren't to open, then we would have to pivot and find a way to bring, to work with our public and our private partners, our volunteer organizations like the Red Cross and AmeriCorps, see if we can get some of those volunteers brought in, potentially from around the country to support us locally as well.
And Cape Cod Tech being one of the newer buildings in the community of Cape Cod, it's beautiful. I just think it's one of the most beautiful buildings I've seen in a while. But the location, a lot of people say, "Oh, it's too far away from Chatham," but in reality, I think for a lot of residents of Chatham, it's probably just as close to go to Cape Cod Tech over on Long Pond Road than it is, or 124 than it is to go downtown.
Yeah, I think in my.
What'd you say?
In my briefing last November on emergency management, I think I outlined that a little with a map and kind of drew that line from the town line in the River Bay area and identified the fact that the, from folks living on that part of town to the community center in Chatham versus going to the tech school, it was, it was a really negligible difference. And beyond that, you know, we've built out some transportation plans. Anytime the regional shelter opens, we, the, we have a county MOU with the regional transit authority to provide transportation to residents from all communities to those regional shelters. And we're building out local transportation plans to support that as well.
And I know when we were talking about the Chatham Center for Active Living in West Chatham at 1610, we were baking in sort of a preliminary overnight facility for emergencies. And the rationale behind that was that it was a new building being constructed and it would have been, you know, an easier to fit it in rather than retrofit another building in town. That seems to be the, my understanding of why we did it that way.
Yeah, and from my perspective, as I mentioned, those community forums, you know, I didn't look at those as necessarily policy discussions, but more just feasibility and forecasting, you know, for a 1% increase on the cost. I think it made a ton of sense to add the showers, to add the storage, and have that capability. If somewhere, somewhere down the road, I mean, 20 years ago, we didn't look forward and look at the buildings we have now. We don't have an opportunity, if we needed it, to use a building in town. So I, in my opinion, if that Center for Active Living were to have moved forward, I think it would have been a little bit short sighted on our part to not build that into the design.
Okay, thank you.
Dean?
Thank you, Corey. Thank you, Chief, and thank you for a very detailed analysis in black and white. I know you've talked about these issues in the past, as has your predecessor, Chief Di Pasquale, and, but it's good to see everything kind of laid out very carefully and thoughtfully. You talked about coming up with plans for transporting people to the regional shelter. It's a real challenge, I think, in some instances in reaching the residents at their homes, particularly if you have a severe snow event or even a hurricane. I assume that the team is working on those efforts as well. I wondered if you wanted to elaborate a little bit about that. I know you've spoken about it in the past.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, we've already, we've already begun our winter planning process between the police department, the fire department, the DPW, to ensure that the DPW has staffing to support plowing and road clearing operations and have backup plans to boost their access to plow drivers. In storms past, we've utilized members of the personnel from the harbor masters department as a sort of chase vehicle with our emergency vehicles to get immediate access to folks that might not have been plowed out yet if an ambulance or a fire truck needed to respond to an emergency incident. In one particular case, two winters ago, they supported us in plowing out a resident that we just went with our fire department personnel to transport to the personal care site. So we all work hand in hand. It's one of the benefits of opening, of opening up the emergency operations center so we can coordinate those efforts through that space and have representation from the different departments.
One of the complications, of course, is if power goes out, if phone service goes out, cell service goes out, which happened a few years ago, it may be difficult to, nearly impossible, I guess, for the resident to communicate. I know we have the reassurance program in the police department, and that's probably part of the solution, but it's something I'm sure that you and your team are working on. Just one other question. Do you happen to know whether any of the surrounding towns have utilized personal care sites during these emergencies, as we've done with the community center, at least in the most?
Yeah, yeah, most do in some capacity.
Okay.
You know, you can look around, really around the Commonwealth, at some of the emergency management websites for the different municipalities, and oftentimes they'll identify those sites on their, on their websites. But senior centers, community centers, town halls are all typical facilities that they would use for a personal care site.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I don't really have any comments, other than, I don't know if anyone from the public is going to say anything, but I think the fire chief has laid out a very comprehensive and intelligent plan for proceeding in this area, and it's not simply focused on the present, but it has the future in mind as well. As he points out in his memo, the problem with the regional school, as you mentioned, it doesn't have a full service generator. And we do have now a full service generator. Is it full service at this community center?
Yeah.
So that's helpful.
Which is very helpful.
Didn't have previously because, remember, we had to move, we had a portable, and at one point it had to be brought back to the fire department, I think, because the fire stations.
Because we lost our generator.
Yeah. So we're in better shape there.
We're in much better shape, yeah. And hopefully what it'll allow us to do is, unless there's, you know, as we start to reopen, you know, of course, if there's a state of emergency, if the governor puts a travel ban out there, obviously there's not going to be people traveling on roads, but as things start to reopen, even if there's a multi-day power outage, the community center's going to be able to reopen for regular business. It wouldn't even necessarily have to be closed down and designated specifically as a personal care site, but as we've done with a couple of these other storms, we've kind of advertised that on Saturday, the community center is going to, is going to be open for regular, during regular business hours from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. So having that full building generator builds the capacity there to be able to do that.
Thank you. I have full confidence in the expert planning that we've been presented with.
Okay. Yep, Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, and as do I. Select board member Castro, you've done a great job. This is a great summary, Chief. I do have a question about, you know, you make a recommendation that we should still plan to have our own facility, and I get the sense from the memo that the middle school is the facility that you would recommend.
Yeah, you know, I think, I feel confident in our plan, in our, in our emergency plans. I feel confident in our Plan A. But what we don't like to do is just sit on our hands because we have a good Plan A. We've all seen our primary plan fall apart at various points. So now that we've kind of solidified that and we're continuing to solidify our transportation plans to go along with that Plan A, now we're starting to look at what does Plan B and Plan C look like? And, you know, these conversations didn't, I just want to be clear, they didn't just start with the discussions over the Center for Active Living. We've been having conversations with facility personnel, as I laid out in the memo, for years about what would we do if, you know, would we be able to use the elementary school? Would we be able to use the middle school? And what elements are lacking in those spaces? So I think it's, I think it's prudent to look at Plan B and just, and just have that in the back of our mind, that if Plan A falls apart, you know, we're still relying on volunteers for that regional plan. Right now, we're fortunate, and the county is committed to supporting it. Those volunteer organizations are committed to supporting it and have appropriate staffing right now, but we don't know what three, five, 10 years away looks like. So, you know, we're just trying to get ahead of things right now.
I totally think it's prudent. I think that's very well, very well said. Just kind of keep us in the loop there, if there becomes any imminent budgetary impacts for executing on Plan B with any kind of accelerated timetable, that's all. But a great memo. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I guess I just want to be clear that Plan B is, first of all, it's not something that you're working on to deal with Shereen's hypothetical total disaster where we have to rely on our own situation here in Chatham. And when I say that, I mean as a response to that set of circumstances. Do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, I guess, I guess potentially, I mean, we, without knowing, kind of with a dynamic situation, without knowing what we might be faced with, I mean, Plan B could certainly become Plan A if, you know, there could be, there could be a catastrophic event at the regional shelter.
Well, let me ask you the different question, which is really the same question. You're not here suggesting that we figure out a way to put a generator over there at the middle school so that it could qualify as a, as a, an emergency evacuation center at this point?
I suppose that's not my, what I'm, I guess it's not my recommendation at this point, but I think it's something that we need to keep our eyes on.
I have no problem with that. What I have a problem with is, and I don't mean to suggest it that way, but I don't think it is prudent for, great discussion. There's nothing in your memo that I have any problem with. The only thing I worry about here is creating an expectation in the community that something's going to happen here in the, let's call it the short to midterm.
Right.
When there are other issues, as you've identified in your memo, that would, so if we're going forward to create a local option, we got a number of things to work on, not just the generator.
We absolutely have a number of things to work on.
Okay, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, and things are not going to happen overnight.
That's fine.
All right, thank you, Mike. I'm going to open it up to the public. I'm going to start with the public in house tonight. Anyone have a question or comment? John?
John Hargren, South Chatham. Luckily, I'm one of those people, probably during the time when you guys would need a shelter, I'm not here, but I just wanted to highlight that two years ago, when I think it was the Halloween storm when we had power outage for a number of weeks, I came down to the community center because I did not have, obviously, power, and I didn't have access to internet because I don't have a data plan on my cellphone. And I was down there, and there was two members of the cert team that were there, and it was me and somebody else. And so, yeah, it was not exactly heavily used at that point because we, obviously, we didn't need to have it for warmth. We just, you know, so it was just a, you know, in a situation like that, when it was already a minor situation, it really wasn't being used that heavily.
Right.
So just wanted to throw that in as a, as a comment. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. No other hands up? Anyone online?
Elaine Gibbs.
Ms. Gibbs, please go ahead.
I'm sure you're surprised. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm not.
I think this, I'm happy to hear the direction that there's, we are looking at Plan B. I think this report lays out the current condition of our town buildings. The Chatham Elementary School and Middle School are not going to be options in the short term because they don't have generators. I would urge that they be repaired and upgraded now rather than waiting three or four years for a whole host of reasons. We've been having this discussion for more than five years, and the progress we've made is we now have a permanent generator at the community center. The storms and outages are getting worse. They're not getting better, and this isn't theoretical. It's already happened. We've got to understand that Chatham is an outpost, and we are potentially on our own. We can't rely on regional shelters. We learned that last January when we were six days without power. NOSAT regional's generator had shut down, and they are no longer a regional center. Cape Cod Tech didn't open due to lack of staffing. Barnstable was the closest shelter at the time. Regional centers don't make their calls until 4:00 p.m. as to as to whether or not they're gonna open up that night and that's too late when we are out of power. During that storm, we had no landlines, no cellphone service to get emergency robocalls, no heat. Our homes were pitch black. The inside, the interiors got down to forty degrees. Uh, many of us had no neighbors. There were no hotels to go to because they didn't have power. Uh, personal generators failed. Mine did. It was a perfect storm. They froze up due to the high winds and drifting snow. The roads were very bad conditions, dangerous for any individual to travel. And those are the great equalizer affecting every every demographic, not just the elderly. And um, I don't think government should in any way abdicate the responsibility to private organizations, whether they be churches or other facilities. And I think there's a reason why Chatham numbers for regional shelters were in the single digits, which was in this memo. Um, the first thing I think we need to do is understand who the customer is and their behavior. For Chatham residents, regions, regional centers are a last resort. They will not call the CPD for transportation. It's not in their nature and they don't want to spend two or three days away from home. And I think it also diverts critical first responders away from town transporting them. The residents who stay through the winter are a special breed, I think, were resourceful by nature or necessity and were well-prepared. But there's one thing we cannot do and that's unlock the doors of our community center. We want to stay in Chatham so we can protect our property. We want to make sure that uh we can check them the next day for frozen pipes. I think there's a difference between a locally initially initiated overnight shelter that has all kinds of FEMA requirements, uh, which take years because we have no facility right now and versus an emergency evacuation shelter, which I think we can do now. In order to waive state and federal mandates under chapter thirty-three, section four H, the select board may declare a state of emergency upon the occurrence of any disaster, catastrophe, fire, flood, earthquake, storm, public health emergency, other natural calamity, active terrorism or cyber attack. Any state of emergency proclaimed by the select board shall terminate five days from the date it takes effect unless sooner uh terminated by proclamation. Right now, the uh community center's normal working hours are eight AM to nine PM. I believe that gives the select board the authority to keep the community center doors unlocked for an additional eight to 10 hours. That's all, that's all I'm asking for and I think this is a Plan B and I think that's where it comes into play. I think this has become far more complicated than it needs to be for a Plan B. Uh, all we would need in that as a during a really severe situation are meals ready to eat and water. I don't think beds, foods, showers are necessary if there is a declared state of emergency. So I'm thinking that the plan should be that in the event that we are given an indication that we are in for some very serious situations, low temperatures, uh, loss of communication where we cannot be contacted, that a policy is stated by the select board that we will keep the community center open during the night uh for that eight hours until dawn and that the agreement is when you come in, you know, you are there to stay warm in a severe emergency uh because at forty degrees, you can get hypothermia within three um three hours. And that they, we leave in the the next morning to go home, to check our homes. That this isn't a long-term deal. This isn't a requirement for two to three days. Uh, the community center is big enough. There is a kitchen. Uh, it's perfectly fine for, you know, MREs. Uh, and we don't need showers. And I think the biggest issue you have is staffing uh because that's always been an issue before. We've never been willing to pay people and it seems to me that the first thing you do is say, we'll pay for town employees, a lot of them who are may already be trained, twenty-five dollars an hour for eight hours. You're talking two hundred and fifty dollars per person. You have four or five people in there. It's a thousand dollars for a night to keep the building open. And um that a a a fire department personnel could be there and or a police officer or they can do drive bys every so often. If they're five minutes away, if there's a medical emergency. Uh, I I think that would go a long way um to having a Plan B. And everybody would understand the criteria before we go there, that it's simply a place we can drive over to ourselves, get warm, not be in a house that is freezing cold, whether we have children, bring them, pets, there's plenty of room in the community center to keep the dogs in one area and the kennels in one area. And uh anybody who might have a contagious disease can be over in another corner for eight hours. That's all I'm asking. This is, it's a policy decision that you can announce ahead of time so that people know it. When they lose all cellphone communication and can't receive robocalls, they know that they can go over there. And I I I think it would be very simple and I think you have the authority to do that. So I would hope that that would be part of the solution. I'd be happy to work with the emergency preparedness people to come up with that alternative plan. Uh, Chatham is unique. We get weather that other towns don't get. Harwich sometimes is not getting what we're getting and we're connected to them. They get power restored before we do and it was six long, very long, very cold days. Houses get very cold, very fast. So I hope you will take this in the spirit it's given and I would like to think that we can have a Plan B so that people know going into the next winter, if we have another event like we did last year, that we will have a place to go uh in that kind of situation because that was a very potentially dangerous situation for people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. Anybody else online? Excuse me. So, um, losing my voice tonight for some reason. So first of all, thank you very much for a very thorough um presentation. I mean, I'm very comfortable with the regional approach and I think, you know, with the reality of it, I know our desire, but the the reality of it is the regional approach is really our best option at the moment. Um, I very much appreciate the the Plan B, that we're not just, we've been moving forward philosophically and understanding where we want to go and we want to figure out what we want to do. Um, but I guess the biggest hurdle for the board right now is is to have this policy discussion. If we were to do as suggested and have the community building open, I think there are some key factors, again, you know, staffing, volunteers, whatever. Um, and if we're paying paying them, they're not volunteers, but what kind of budgetary item we need to consider? Is there a liability issue? I mean, it's it's, I know the desire is to provide that, but it's not just a a simple yes or no discussion. If there's there'll, there's a fair amount of consideration that we need to put into place because I think we have and will continue to, I mean, we have certain resources. We have a a list of our very vulnerable citizens already on a in a in a database that we know if there's something happens, we're gonna reach out to them. So we have that element in place. We have a lot of people that frankly are just gonna stay in their home, you know. They 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 have pets. Some of these facilities, I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, may not allow pets or may not allow some certain type of pets. So there are some other hurdles that, you know, for good or bad, are in play. So, um, I guess my, I mean, my suggestion is, I mean, I support the recommendation of the chief. You know, we 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 have our Plan A is the is the regional approach. You know, we keep working on Plan B and when the time comes to make a recommendation, whether whether it be the middle school or if it's a different facility we're building or whatever, you know, where are we putting the money on the table for the voters to consider? And that we continue at the very least, the community building as it is, uh, with the resources we have and then try to figure out from a policy discussion how to beef up those resources, more volunteers, whether they're paid or unpaid, um, what other amenities that we can offer, um, and just keep building on the programs we have. I think that's the best path forward, but again, I I opened up the thoughts from the board. Now, Mike?
Yeah, I I I I agree with what you're saying, Corey. I I just, and I don't want to put this on you because I agree with this a hundred percent, but I want to read from your opinion, uh, your recommendation. You say, it is my opinion that there is little value in dedicating time and resources toward recruiting and training community volunteers and town employees to serve as local s- uh shelter staffing when there currently is not a facility that meets the requirements of a local shelter. You know, I I I that, to me, that's, and I applaud what you're doing, planning, thinking, uh, looking at all the resources you would need to assemble in order to have that capability, but at the moment, we don't have it. And I I appreciate your your clear statement of that. Thank you.
And and as part of that, if I may, you know, a- as I mentioned, last year, we did put out a survey. Uh, we we are continuously discussing with department heads uh to try to identify members of their staff who might be good fits, who might be interested in in participating. So while that training might not be provided overnight, we are working towards trying to identify those things. So I think it's important that those things happen kind of collaterally with each other.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Jeff? I just have a quick question. The, for the storm that Ms. Gibbs mentions, um, why, why did the regional shelter not open, that that particular storm? Is it just?
If if my recollection is correct, and I'd have to go back to my notes, but uh Cape Cod Tech had not been stood up yet as a brand new building. They weren't prepared to open as a shelter yet.
I didn't, okay.
At that time, NOSAT Regional High School hadn't begun their construction yet, so they were still the primary regional shelter for this end of the Cape. So NOSAT had stood up. Um, there was very low turnout during that storm. Um, from from Harwich to P-Town, they had thirteen total show up. So while I understand that, you know, we were in a little bit different circumstance here in Chatham, we, there was a main transmission line down that took a little bit longer to get us restored, that that was open. That was an option. Um, eventually there was a pivot made to go towards Barnstable High School because of the, you have to maximize resources. It doesn't make sense to to keep two, three regional shelters open across a geographic area if there's only two or three people here and two or three people there. At a certain point, that number from thirteen went down to, I think, two or three still at the regional shelter at NOSAT. So a decision was made at that point to move them to Barnstable.
Quick, another quick question. Should that type of storm rear its ugly head again? The regional, the the tech school is ready to receive.
Yep.
They're they're stood up. They're ready to go.
They're ready to go.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
Um, I just want to add from my experience on that storm too. I did sit in at the community center for a little while. And uh with some of the CERT volunteers and there were just a handful of folks that were there. And I think there might have been one or two, you know, might might have been a little more vulnerable than others, but um, and they had the option to go up to Orleans if they wanted to. But I thought it was uh adequate for what we needed for that day, kept people warm. Uh, you know, we, I think we even grabbed sandwiches for a couple of people and things like that, just to, um, and you know, I think it worked out okay. You know, it 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 did. And people were coming and going, getting warm, going out, coming back. And Corey and I, you know, we shoveled the driveway.
Shoveling, yeah.
Got the ice out of the way that day. It was a good community day.
And 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 if I may again, you know, I I i- in this memo, I do reference Plan A, Plan B. Um, and I use Plan B somewhat arbitrarily because, you know, we do have a Plan B right now. Plan B would be an additional regional shelter. You know, so if something catastrophic happened, did did happen at Cape Tech, we'll have DY Regional High School as a as another option. So, I mean, if you look around the rest of the Commonwealth, there's there's areas where folks are having to travel twenty to thirty miles for regional shelter. Um, so part of this comes down to being prepared ahead of time, um, trying to get, uh, you know, if you know we're gonna get hit by a major storm, to maybe go and move in with a neighbor, with a friend, with a family member. Um, obviously, there's some things outside our control where generators fail, um, but to try to have those plans in place ahead of time and to take action on those plans, not once the storm gets here and once the impact is here, but uh to be proactive about it.
All right. Well, Chief, thank you very much for the presentation. The memo was was fully covered every aspect we could ask for, so I think this has been a good discussion and we look forward to future updates. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Barnstable County Human Rights Advisory Commission, announcement of open seats to the discussion of the Chatham liaison. So this just recently hit our radar. Um, there was an inquiry about, um, does does Chatham have a liaison to this committee? And we amongst several other community communities don't have a liaison appointed. So there is an opportunity, there's two, a couple, two opportunities that we have been made aware of. One is, um, there are three open seats on the commission. Uh, one's the commission and two are alternates um that we may want to consider advertising out for people who want to step forward and want to put their name into consideration. Uh, and then as important or more even more importantly, there's an opportunity for the select board to consider how to appoint a liaison to the Barnstable County Human Rights Advisory Commission. Now, this can be either a staff member or we could reach out to the public, um, ask for, you know, people to step forward and interview them. Um, so we have a couple avenues. There's nothing in our um charter or anything that kind of specifies how to act on this, so it's we have kind of a little bit of open territory here. Um, but I definitely support us moving forward with advertising the the three open seats. You know, we do everything we can, the mains, the main sheet and what have you not, um, to get that word out there. And then, um, I'd like the board to kind of make a decision tonight if we would like to fill the liaison position uh via staff or we want to reach out to the um public at large. So that's the discussion I'd like to kick off right now. So would anyone like to share their thoughts? Dean?
Well, I think we should treat this, I I I agree with you about advertising and encouraging applicants to submit their applications to the county for the um actual membership on the on the commission and the and the two alternates. I think as far as the town is concerned and and identifying a liaison, I think we should treat it the same way we treat every committee appointment. I think we should announce it, put it on the ma- a website, put it on the main sheet and interview candidates. And I I wouldn't necessarily limit it to staff. I think if there is a staff person that's interested, they should be considered. But I think we should also open it up to the general public. There are people that are very much interested, and I think we all are in in the purposes of this body. But there are, there are people in the community who are very much engaged in this area and there may be someone that will step up.
I am certain there are people who are set up because I'm already made aware that there are people who have interest in them. So um, I think this is, this is an opportunity for us to get a voice or at least, you know, someone to collaborate with uh be a liaison to this committee and 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 work with the town. So to to not feel this is gonna be foolish. So we should do this as quickly as possible and if we could get them out, you know, put a certain timetable to kind of recruit the applications, which I'm I'm sure they're gonna come in as soon as we announce this after today. Um, let's move, let's move this forward.
I have a process question for you. So, um, you're saying that we we would consider having applicants come before us for consideration to apply or we would encourage them to directly apply?
The first, the three openings, we we encourage people to move, to apply themselves. They, we we play no role in that 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 process. Our role is simply appointing the liaison. That is, that is our role, the select board is gonna have a process and yes.
All right. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, I I'll just kind of gloss a little bit Dean's comments. I I I agree if there's a staff person that would like to do this, I I think we should consider them along with everybody else. I could imagine that this is really taking on additional duties that, you know, potentially could pinch, if not conflict with, from a time point of view, uh, duties they have, their regular duties. Um, and I just note that, um, and particularly if you're aware that there is interest in the community uh to do this um as more a volunteer basis, I I I would, I would welcome that.
Okay. Do you want to put like a two-week timetable out? Put that, is that too long? I mean?
Is that enough?
I think it's enough.
I think we can give it.
Three weeks? Four weeks?
We've gone this long.
Well, yes, okay, okay. So, um.
I give it a month, Corey.
A month? Well, I mean arbitrary date, so.
With 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 two or three announcements encouraging people uh along the way.
Okay. So one, two, three, four. Do you want to go to like the first the first meeting on November, the the seventh? I mean, it's an arbitrary date to me, but that far enough out? November's?
Is that the date for the appointment or to add for applications?
Applications.
Applications.
Yeah. So applications are due by November seventh and then we will schedule interviews. We can schedule interviews as they come in and anything beyond that, we'll make an appointment from there. from there.
This is for the position of liaison?
Correct.
Thanks.
Okay. Everyone good with that? Okay. I don't think we need a motion. All right. Are we done?
Point.
Get in, get in, get in. All right. Okay. We have appointments to the newly comprised Affordable Housing Trust. So procedurally, a couple steps in this. We're going to take two members from the Select Board. We're going to appoint one member from the Community Housing Partnership, and then the remaining members are coming from the at-large population. Membership can be up to two years. It is recommended that we stagger them to some degree. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to fill the two Select Board memberships first. We have two of our colleagues who have stepped forward, Shereen Davis and Michael Shell, and I'd like to fill their positions first since we have two candidates and two positions. We only decision is term limits. So, Dean.
Mr. Chairman, I think, and this would apply to the Select Board members, too. We're supposed to try to stagger them, so we have potential votes to appoint people to terms expiring in June 30th, 2024, which is not quite a full year, and then June 30th, 2025. So I think we should sort of take all the positions and split them in half. I mean, there's four of them should be perhaps for a two-year term or one-year term. When I say one year, I mean June 30th, 2024. And the others should be for the other term, and we should perhaps start with the Select Board.
I will start with the Select Board.
I don't have a choice, but...
Let's see. Okay, so I will select, okay, I will ask for nominations to the Select Board for the term ending in 2024. That will be the one-year term.
May I ask, I don't want to put anyone on the spot. Do either of you have a preference?
I'm going to make it easy for everybody. My term, this term ends before 2025, so I would think I should be a candidate for the one-year term. And conversely, Shereen's ends beyond the two-year term. So I think that makes it simple. With that in mind, Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Michael Shell as the Select Board Representative to the Affordable Housing Trust until June 30th, 2024.
Do I hear a second?
Soon revoked or a successor is appointed.
Do I hear a second? Okay. All those in favor? Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. Okay. Now for the two-year term.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Shereen Davis as the Select Board Representative to the Affordable Housing Trust until June 30th, 2025, unless soon revoked or a successor is appointed.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. Okay. Now, we have to fill in one position for the Community Housing Partnership. First question is term, one-year, two-year? Any preference? Two-year preference, probably? I'd say two years, fine.
I would think two.
Two-year? All right. So agreement on two years, so I will accept nominations for the two-year term.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I move to appoint Carolyn McClellan, where am I? As the Community Housing Partnership Representative to the Affordable Housing Trust until June 30th, 2025, unless soon revoked or a successor is appointed.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second now.
All right. All those, any further nominations? All those in favor? Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. All right. Now we're going to go to at-large, and we have one, two, three, four, five, six. We have seven candidates. We have Mr. Bean who was not, who, so we have seven at-large candidates. No, so, sorry, six.
Six.
Six. Caroline was appointed. My apologies. So we have six at-large candidates, and we have one, two, three, four positions. So we'll do two, one-year, two, two-years? Is that our fair agreement? Do we want to do the one-year agreement? Actually, I'll accept nominations for the first opening, and we can make it a one-year or two-year, so I'm not going to overcomplicate this, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I'd like to move to appoint David Oppenheim as an at-large member of the Affordable Housing Trust until June 30th, 2025, which is the two-year term, unless soon revoked or a successor is appointed.
Two-year term. Okay.
Second.
Additional nominations?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead. No, you go ahead.
I move to appoint Rick Levitt as an at-large member until June 30th, 2025, unless soon revoked or a successor is appointed.
Second.
Second, okay. Additional nominations? Okay. So we do a roll call. We have Rick Levitt or David Oppenheim. Dean?
Rick Levitt.
Shereen?
Rick Levitt.
Jeff?
Mick Levitt.
Mike?
Oppenheim.
Oppenheim. Okay, so Rick Levitt is in. Rick Levitt.
Now, we have to decide on term?
That was a two-year term. The nomination was for a two-year term.
Okay.
So we have one two-year term left and two one-year terms left for the three remaining positions. So I accept the nomination for the second slot with an appropriate term.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I nominate David Oppenheim as an at-large member for the Affordable Housing Trust until June 30th, 2025, a two-year term.
A two-year term. That would be the second two-year term. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. And additional nominations for this spot? Dean?
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Luther Bates as an at-large member of the Affordable Housing Trust until June 30th, 2025, unless soon revoked or a successor is appointed.
Second?
Second.
Okay, second. So we have additional nominations. So we have David Oppenheim and Luther Bates for the second two-year term. Dean?
Luther Bates.
Shereen?
Oppenheim.
Jeff?
David Oppenheim.
Mike?
Oppenheim.
Oppenheim. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please. So we have two one-year terms left.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I move to appoint Leslie Schneberger as an at-large member of the Affordable Housing Trust until June 30th, 2024, you said?
2024, yes, correct.
Unless soon revoked or a successor is appointed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Additional nominations?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I nominate Luther Bates as an at-large member of the Affordable Housing Trust until June 30th, 2024, unless soon revoked or a successor is appointed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Additional nominations? All right. So we have Luther Bates and Leslie Schneberger. Dean?
Leslie Schneberger.
Shereen?
Leslie Schneberger.
Jeff?
Schneberger.
Leslie Schneberger.
Mike?
Luther Bates.
Leslie Schneberger. Okay. So we have one more at-large. I'm going to take the liberty of nominating Bruce Bean to the last position of the 2024.
Second.
Second. And future nominations?
I move to appoint Kathy Doyle.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.[1714.15]